Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the December 10, 2024 meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to ask quick, please call the roll.
Supervisor Konik.
Here.
Friend.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
McPherson and Cummings.
Here. I'd like to see if there's any member of the board who would like to dedicate today's moment of silence. If saying none, I'll just go ahead and take a general moment of silence. You all stand, please stand and join the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, in the flag, the United States of America, your republic, which extends.
I'd like to ask County Minister of Officer Blas if there's any late additions or deletions to the regular consent agendas today.
We have no corrections today. We are perfect.
All right, there we go. Okay, is there any board member who would like to remove an item from the consent to the regular agenda? Saying none, I will move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us to items that are not on the agenda, items that are on consent agenda, or if you'd like to speak to an item on our regular agenda, just note that you will not be able to speak a second time when that item is heard. And I'd like to ask first person here in public to approach the podium, thank you.
Chair Cummings, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We've detected a slight audio issue. Could we take a couple of moments to just correct that setting before public comment? Thank you.
On Zoom. Ready to proceed.
I think, okay, so we'll have the first member of the public approach the podium, thank you. You'll have two minutes.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is David Brody. I'm the Executive Director at First Five Santa Cruz County. And I'm here today to thank you and specifically Chair Cummings for proclaiming and recognizing January 2025 as Positive Parenting Awareness Month, our 13th Annual Positive Parenting Awareness Month in Santa Cruz County. I think, as you all know, this proclamation is very much a recognition of our growing understanding of the importance of positive parenting and the fact that it is a powerful predictor of future social, emotional, and physical health of our kids. Proclamations like this one for us and the Positive Parenting Awareness Month activities that we have planned through First Five and Triple P and our partners in the coming months, together really help normalize the act of parents seeking support to help decrease stress that is associated with parenting in our society, stress that is unfortunately increasing and increasing for all parents. We want to recognize and commend the U.S. Surgeon General's recent release of his advisory on mental health and well-being of parents, where he explains the clear relationship between rental stress, rental mental health, and child outcomes. The Surgeon General's report makes very clear that we all must work together to support parents, and I'm proud of the leadership of this board, this county, our nonprofit partners, and parents in our community who have shown to do just that, to work together in the interests of parents and families, no matter their shape or composition. And for two of your members who won't be on this board much longer, you've been with us in this Positive Parenting Awareness journey essentially from the beginning, and we want to thank you for your tremendous support, not just for the support you've shown for First Five and our Triple P program, but for truly standing behind all of the board's actions in support of children and families at minimum my last 11, 13 years of this initiative. We are grateful to both of you. We are grateful to this entire board, and we're grateful to the new members who will be joining you in January because we know there will be an ongoing commitment to children and families in our county. So again, thank you Chair Cummings for recognizing and declaring January 2025 Positive Parenting Awareness Month. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Hesenia Gomez-Carellano, and I'm the Triple P Program Manager at First Five Santa Cruz County. On behalf of First Five, which oversees the local implementation of the Triple P Positive Parenting Program, I want to thank the board for designating January 2025 as Positive Parenting Awareness Month. This proclamation brings attention to the vital role of parenting and caregiving and highlights the availability of evidence-based resources like Triple P, which equips parents and caregivers with practical, effective tools to strengthen family bonds and raise happy, healthy, and well-adjusted children. Every year, more than 2,000 parents and children in our community benefit from Triple P. Parents consistently report high satisfaction and meaningful improvements in their parenting skills, confidence, children's behavior, family communication, and emotional well-being. Today's parents are resilient, yet the pressures they face are overwhelming. Balancing work, caregiving, and household responsibilities has led to increased anxiety, depression, and burnout. We're aware of the gaps in support systems for parents, including the lack of access to affordable care, paid family leave, and mental health services. We're committed to reducing the stigma around mental health and connecting families to resources they need to thrive, and Triple P is here to support them. Triple P's motto is "Small changes make a big difference," and we've seen how true this is for families in our community. This Positive Parenting Awareness Month, we're excited to celebrate and support our families with fun, interactive activities across Santa Cruz County, from workshops and resource fairs hosted by local nonprofits to family-friendly fitness with YMCA's family Latin dance class to art activities with Paharo Valley Arts and nature walks with Oak Corn Slough. We're proud to offer opportunities for families to come together and thrive. Thank you to the board, First Five, and all our partners for making a difference in the lives of families. Together, we're creating a stronger, more supportive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Soto-Sullivan, Santa Cruz, and I addressed this board over the internet at the last meeting, inviting you all to join the revolution that is happening to restore human and constitutional rights from the encroachments of technocratic government under the guise of social justice and public health measures. At that meeting, I joined the voices of the community who were concerned about the rush to vote on the funding for local communities under the core criteria. Since then, I'm pleased, I read in the Sentinel that you guys found some couch money to, you know, support Meals on Wheels and Grey Bears, but not the toddler center. And so I was kind of inspired by this, and I took a day or so to look at the county website and to kind of evaluate from my, you know, individual perspective, the organizations that were funded and those that were not funded. And what I came away with in the main is that, according to the criteria of Core and its mysterious processes, the organizations that were funded were ones that are consistent with reducing human beings to data points and thus facilitating a kind of technocratic new form of governance. There was no criteria of what supports local autonomy, what is in the fabric of the community, what has been longstanding. And I think that means there's an invitation for all of us to reevaluate the DEI criteria and the way that we're running things, or you guys are in the county. The top-funded organization Ventures provides banking services and financial incentives for migrants to be vaccinated. I believe this is a violation of the Nuremberg Code. I found the consent form on the internet from the Children's Health Alliance. Now, refer you to the last thing. Ventures does not have to follow privacy laws. This means Ventures could share the information above with others. Ventures has told us that they will not share your baby's information.
Thank you.
Good morning, Becky Steinbrenner. I didn't think I would be here, but the well ordinance that was, is item 10 on your agenda is too important. I put time to be here. My concern with the well ordinance, and I hope you will consider this when item 10 comes up, is that there is no appeals process in any of this, and there should be. There really needs to be, especially since if you look at 7.70.110 J and F, no new wells or replacement wells will be allowed in areas where there are groundwater replenishment projects going on. If you look at the map in your packet, there is a small area in the injection well boundaries of the Pier Water SoCal project. This new ordinance will effectively force consolidation of the Pine Tree Lane, Bluff Water Mutual, and the private well owners within that area. There is no appeal for them, and this is forced consolidation because they would not be allowed under this new permitting to get a replacement or supplemental well. This is a taking, and I really hope you consider it. There is also no, there has been no contact with the Farm Bureau regarding the impacts of the, on the ag wells in the Paharo Valley, again citing the groundwater replenishment project area of the College Lake and others that Paharo Valley Water Management Agency has. Under this new regulation, those ag wells, those farmers will not be able to get a well permit for a new well in their area. This again is a taking, and the Farm Bureau has not been contacted about it. I urge you to.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Sandra Rodeo. I'm here representing community breaches and the Triple P program, and I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging the Parenting Month awareness, that we help families with parenting skills and to take, help them to avoid court and to build a better community and better families. And so I'm here just to thank you all for doing this. So, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and members of the board. I am Tricia Weber, the Santa Cruz County Clerk and Registrar of Voters. Today on your agenda is the Statement of Vote for the November 5th Presidential General Election that was certified by me in my office on Tuesday, December 3rd. Santa Cruz, or excuse me, 81.13% of Santa Cruz County voted in the November election. Although that percentage is a little lower than we've seen in previous presidential general elections, our county saw a turnout that was well above the state average, which was 71.4%. Of the 136,505 people who cast a vote, 69.55% did that by mail, and 11.58% did that in person at one of our 24 voting locations across the county. I would like to thank everyone who helped me with making this election secure, transparent. My staff of 13 very dedicated people who put their lives on hold for over six months to help Santa Cruz County voters have their voices heard, the extra help staff who came in to make their plans into fruition, the volunteers who worked at our voting locations for up to 10 days, the people who did our receiving boards and our Dropbox pickups, the city clerks of Capitola, Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, and Watsonville who served as the election officials for the city contests, our county family who provided us with facility support, IT support, personnel support, and sometimes just an ear to listen, and to you, Board of Supervisors, for your faith in the department and our process. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. My name is Still James Ealing Whitman. I feel so naked without this fabrication of clear plastic around me. So, you know, what do we have? 3100 counties? You know, several of them are having supervisors meeting today, like in the county of San Diego, where they're going to kind of meander and change the Browns Act. Because apparently people get upset because you say things that you don't want to necessarily think about or hear. I think everybody can change. I mean, we have a choice with all our actions, with every breath, whether we are going to be positive or negative. I really wish I saw more positive in here. Thinking of three men that I'm aware of, two are deceased, one is still living, that I think unintentionally or intentionally did some evil things and changed. So I'm thinking of Theodore Gressel, who initially some of his animations were sold remote items like DDT, which created polio. And then Stan Tukki Williams, who was, I don't know if he was started the Bloods or the Crips, I don't recall, but he wrote a lot of really powerful children's books. Then we have David Martin, who describes the diabolical crap that's been going on, where he does a clear history starting in 2000, excuse me, 1902 is what's going on, which was the failed League of Nations became the UN. What's going on with all of our controls? So I'm not sure what to say. There's a lot of things. You know, I was asked by a woman at a at a garage sale, you know, I had suggested running as a pre-1783 United States Constitutional Republic County Sheriff. At that time, that type of sheriff could arrest a sitting president. Boy, anybody running at that matter would be quite busy. So enough for now. Thank you.
Yes, hello. So this is not a civilized society when society allows people to live on the street. We have a guy, David, his name David, he lives on an island between stuff of life and thrift store, and it's going on for years already. He's talking to himself, he's screaming out loud. It means he's severely mentally ill. It is an illness, and he is obviously and visibly gravely disabled. I believe it's belonged to Justin Cummings Department. I'm asking to instruct the Behavior Health Division to take care of that person because it's just humiliation to the society. It has to be taken care of. People should not live on the street. People should be taken care of, not just dogs and cats. And when somebody gravely disabled, it means somebody needs help. If somebody adult, it doesn't mean that adult can ask for help. People need responsible people, need to take care of that. And it is going on, the, actually, the program, it has name MKI Ultra Program, is a human experimentation program designed and undertaken by CIA to develop procedures and identify drugs that could be used during interrogations to weaken individuals and force confession through brainwashing and psychological torture, make people to do what they want you to do. So this is what our Behavior Health Division does, and I complain about that already many, many times, that they're enemies of the society, and especially manager for adult program, Robert, oh my gosh, Robert, and they already got his name. Who instructs Sheriff's Department, you know, do not do their job.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else here in Cambridge who'd like to speak? Board, please step forward.
Good morning. My name's Carolyn Burke. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director of Resin Special Services, and I'd like to recognize the retirement of a much beloved member of the Public Works and Community Development and Infrastructure Staff, Rachel Fatui, Senior Civil Engineer in the Flood Control and Stormwater Management Division. So I will, Rachel is actually on her way. Unfortunately, we misjudge public comment, but I will read this in her absence. So, "Proclamation honoring Rachel Fatui on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas after more than 35 years of dedicated service to the County of Santa Cruz, Rachel Fatui is retiring from her position as Senior Civil Engineer, managing the Flood Control and Stormwater Management Section in the Department of Community Development and Infrastructure Public Works Division. And whereas Rachel has been a treasured member of Public Works and now Community Development and Infrastructure with her uncanny ability to provide decades of drainage history on any person in the county and constant willingness to share her knowledge and mentor others. And whereas during her time with the county, Rachel has made friendships that have endured through retirements and life changes. And one of her favorite things is to celebrate the successes of others as evidenced by her wall of family photos and Christmas cards from all whom have had the good fortune to work with her. And whereas Rachel has been a loyal steward of the drainage zones throughout the county, ensuring that funds are used for their intended purpose and to the greatest good of the residents of the zones. And whereas for more than 20 years, Rachel has helped coordinate work by various county departments and local cities in order to protect water quality and to keep the county in compliance with its municipal separate stormwater permit. And whereas Rachel has inspired her coworkers and employees to be better public servants with her positive attitude and genuine kindness. And whereas all her friends and colleagues in the Department of Community Development and Infrastructure and throughout the county will miss her greatly as she embarks on her next adventure of becoming the most attentive and doting grandmother a granddaughter could ask for. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Chair of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, extend my deepest appreciation and gratitude to Rachel Fatui for her exceptional service and contributions to her workforce and wish her a fulfilling and joyous retirement." Thank you all for your consideration of this.
Thank you so much. All right, to have any other members of the public here in person who'd like to speak to us at this time? Seeing none, we'll go and see if there's anyone online who'd like to address the board.
Yes, Chair. Bernie, your microphone is now available.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Bernie Gomez. I'm with Milpa. I wanted to give a brief comment on item number 49, deferring the conversation we were supposed to have today around Juvenal Hall and Ranch Camp. I just want to let the board know that we are continuing to actively engage community members, organizations, other sectors and stakeholders, right, around the opportunity that we have here in this county to provide something different, something more humane and community-driven for these young people who are navigating a hard time in their life. So with that being said, we look forward to continuing to work with the county, the probation department, and also just want to say good luck and endeavors to Brandon McPherson, right? And we look forward to incoming new board and see what we can do and how we can work together to provide the much-needed South County and the people who are navigating the system. With that being said, thank you very much, Chairman Esteban.
Chair, we have additional speakers, but we've detected an additional technical difficulty, so we're going to allow ISD to support us for a moment.
We'll take a break.
Call in user two, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I'm quoting from an article by Global Research. It's a killer vaccine worldwide. Japanese researchers say side effects of COVID vaccines link to two hundred and one types of diseases. You will find diseases of the heart, kidney, thyroid, diabetes, liver, skin, eyes, blood, nerves, systemic diseases, brain, lungs. Professor Masou in OE, Osaka City University School of Medicine. There are numerous studies published in the course of the last three years which confirm the dangers of the vaccines. The results of the Japanese studies confirm unequivocally that the COVID vaccine is a dangerous substance which should be immediately withdrawn worldwide. That includes Santa Cruz County. A recent book review is in Wise Traditions for Fall 2024. And to Upside Down Medicine, it's entitled. Contagion Viruses and Vaccines. You just heard a reference earlier to polio. Here's a paragraph on that. One virus never proven to exist is polio. The author, whose last name is G O B E R, Gober, explains the flaws in the research allegedly proving its existence and cites the plausible perspective that links polio typical symptoms to toxic pesticides such as lead, arsenate, benzene, hexachloride, and DDT. Jim Webb's compiled data suggesting that polio cases tracked closely with pesticides.
Call in user one six two eight, your microphone is now available.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, morning. My name is Rich Rockingham. I'd like to read a couple paragraphs from a book about, a book called The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines. What causes autism? The answer depends on where you get your information. On the CDC website, the following risk factors for autism are listed. Gains genetic or chromosomal conditions, children who have a sibling with ASD. Restriction drugs taken during pregnancy like valproic acid and thalidomide. Critical periods before, during, and immediately after birth, and children born to older parents. But when it comes to addressing vaccines as a possible cause, the CDC unequivocally states that there is no connection. Fortunately, there are numerous independent scientific studies that disprove such persistent denials. While the CDC emphasizes a genetic predisposition associated with autism, there is overwhelming evidence that based on laboratory studies that the toxic ingredients in the many vaccines given here have a given, have a cumulative neurotoxic effect that acts as a primary trigger for autism. For example, toxins in vaccines have been shown to damage the myelin sheath, protective coating that surrounds the nerve fibers in the brain, optic nerves, and spinal cord. This is referred to as dymyelination, in which the nerve cells that facilitate the passing along of electrical impulses in the central nervous system are damaged, causing neurological problems. In addition, the overuse of vaccines causes an excessive activation of the immune system, which can precipitate an autoimmune disorder. This is particularly evident with premature infants or immune compromised children. Baldu Singh, Punjab University Professor in India, completed a comprehensive review of two hundred and five vaccine studies showing that the neurotoxic.
Thank you so much for your comments.
iPhone, your microphone's now available.
Hi, this is Michelle Wall. Is it my time?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. I am calling about the agendas that are proposing infrastructure to the rural areas. As you know, I've lived here for twenty-five and a half years. I've paid over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in equivalents for property taxes. As recent as last week, Richard Negabon held a gun to yet another neighbor. The sheriffs do nothing with that hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was to pay for sheriff. As you know, Richard Negabon is a known felon who has committed violence to a half a dozen property owners here. He's living in an illegal dwelling that Santa Cruz County Planning has refused to protect us and tear the place down. It is an illegal dwelling. And I said, give me the order. I will tear it down. You guys have not done anything for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I do not have a sheriff. I do not have a safe road where I can have a safe ETA to the hospital if there's a medical emergency or if there is a fire. So I'm paying a hundred and fifty thousand, actually, I'm getting robbed, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Board of Supervisor, the County of Santa Cruz, not to protect me from the sheriff, not to protect me for my road. I do not have a landline. I do not have internet. And I have to take care of my own garbage, sewage, water. You're taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for all of those jobs that I'm doing. I want my money back. And I want you to get in there and get rid of this felon who's holding a gun to half a dozen neighbors up here. What the hell are you doing? What is wrong with you that you can sit there and take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from me and not do a damn thing?
Him, your microphone's now available.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So anyways, that was an interesting thing that I just heard there. If there's a situation where neighbors, property owners are being threatened by an individual with a firearm, I think that's something where sheriff definitely needs to go up there and investigate and take care of the matter. So we can't have that in American society. Okay? So all of us property owners are paying taxes for sheriff, for law enforcement. So if that's real, please act on it. Vaccines. Don't mean to bust the anti-vax bubbles here, but not buying the stories here and the conspiracy theory. Okay? Vaccines are predominant in American society and to fabulous effect. You know, we have eight billion people on the planet now. You know, that's vaccines and antibiotics. All right. Now antibiotics, obviously, we have to worry about a little bit. You know, if diseases sort of run ahead of that, that's an issue. But vaccines, people thinking about, we're going to be getting rid of vaccines. You could just forget about it. We're going to have vaccines and we're going to be, we're going to vaccinate our dogs and cats, obviously, against the rabies virus. Okay? You know, there's some common sense here. Yes, some people, very few can be harmed by vaccines. And our medical, you know, professions should be there to help them for sure. Okay? But taking vaccines off the table for the American society, no way. I'm a hundred percent against that. I'm very well aware that smallpox is still out there in two labs, the United States and Russia, and that could be weaponized to kill a hundred million American people. So vaccines are going to be available for the American people, period. Anyways, thank you so much and you folks have a very fine day.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, that'll bring it back to the board to see if there's any questions, comments on items on the consent to approve the consent agenda. I'll start to my right with Supervisor Fran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a couple of brief items, which is on item twenty-nine, appreciation for the Apthos Library Contract. What a remarkable gift for future generations that library is. It's one of my favorite places to be and my son appreciates the chess, the chess tournaments that they have there as well. I'd like to also comment on item fifty-two, appreciate the work regarding the prioritization tool and specifically that's just going to be focused on emergency repairs specifically. I think that's the most appropriate component to that. So looking forward to that for future unfortunate emergencies. And lastly, on item sixty, with the Perfma contract, which is the Flood Control District that will be doing the repairs on this, on the Popora River Levy Project. Our county has done a remarkable amount of work in this regard, much more really than any other entity across the region. And this is just moving us forward for the last element toward construction. This is seventy years in the coming and it's a pretty remarkable thing to see finally happening. I know it's just a a maintenance contract that's listed here at the end of an agenda, but I mean, the magnitude of what this means is pretty significant. So just appreciate all the work from county staff that have done so much on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. A few thank yous on item thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. I want to thank Shane Papo Netti for volunteering to be our new planning commissioner in District One, Luke Rizzuto for volunteering to be our alternate planning commissioner, and Chris Jones for volunteering for the Emergency Medical Care Commission as an at-large representative for consumers. Item thirty-five, I want to thank Supervisor Friend for volunteering to write a letter to Governor Newsom regarding property insurance. This is absolutely an urgent matter. Santa Cruz County unfortunately topped the list for policies dropped for homeowners insurance. And in fact, even my parents looking at Santa Cruz Mountains are now on the California Fair Plan, which many would argue is not so fair when it comes to the price. No, I'm glad that you volunteered to write this letter, Supervisor Friend. I did want to congratulate Rachel Fatui on her retirement, as was noted. Rachel was actually one of the first county employees I ever worked with back when I was doing public outreach and we did some stormwater surveys for the department. And Rachel is always just extremely good natured and a joy to work with and wishing her all the best, playing with her grandkids. Finally, item twenty-four, the county bail schedule. I did ask county council, can we actually propose changes to the bail schedule today?
Depends on what the changes would be.
Well, I just, I just have one proposed change. So on item two fifty-four, overnight parking for mobile homes or recreational vehicles prohibited. Current fine is fifty dollars. It's a flat rate, no matter the number of times someone is cited. In fact, when I was working with the deputy in our community policing department, Sergeant Randall Hoppe, he was actually had an impression that we had already increased this to a hundred and fifty dollars. Just to make sure that we formalize that today, I would propose that we increase the fine from fifty to a hundred and fifty.
So I would, I would, I would really need to either postpone the item. If you want to take it off of of consent, if the board agreed and move it to a regular item, I could take a look at the code and figure out whether or not in our code, it actually mandates that it be fifty dollars as opposed to one hundred and fifty dollars. I just don't have enough information right now to say that it's, it's what you're proposing would, okay?
Sure. If we need to move it to a regular agenda item, then I guess I would propose that. Can I ask, is there any way that we could maybe continue it to the next meeting? And then that way you can do your analysis and get back to the board with that information on how that could be changed?
Yeah, I mean, yes. And with regard to the language, rather than, rather than continuing it to the next meeting, I would just propose that we just take it off this meeting and put it on to the next meeting. Is that okay?
That's, I mean, if that's okay, right?
Okay, then I'll be in touch with you about the specific issue and we'll work through it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So and what item number was that?
That was item twenty-four, the county bail schedule.
And that concludes your comments.
That does. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson.
Yes, I'd like to address item number twenty-six, the Annie Casey Foundation Grant. Congratulations to the CIO's office on this grant to engage the results count leadership program. This is a good investment for our county and these principles are designed to address community needs and data-driven ways, which is very much a step with our strategic planning processes in the probation area. I went back with a group of folks in my first year as county supervisor to Philadelphia and the Annie Casey Foundation is really remarkable foundation to to address some needs that we have in this county. Our county clerk, Tricia Weber, took all the thunder out of what I was going to say. Congratulations on the Santa Cruz County voters in the last election. We were eighty-one percent compared to statewide. It was about seventy-one. We're usually even higher than that, but in a presidential election year, but it's really, really something. And it was real challenge for the elections department to put this ballot throughout the county together because there were some shared districts between counties and other things that were going on, but they did a remarkable job and with only thirteen people there and what they were facing, it was, it was quite a list of issues that were on the ballot. So congratulations to them. And I'd like to congratulate supervisors-elect Martinez and De Cerpa, who will be taking their positions, I think, on January seventh, be sworn in. Congratulations on your winning your supervisory elections in November. And on item thirty-five, Supervisor Friend's letter to the Governor Newsom about the industry, insurance industry dropping customers. I would like to be added as a signatory to that if I could. You would?
Absolutely, as long as you're willing to write the letter. Just kidding. No, yeah, we'd love to have you join in on.
Yeah, because we were as, well, the whole county was hammered, but Santa Rosa Valley was just really taken, they took a real big hit on that. So I'd be, thank you. I'd like to do that. And to ratify the nonprofit agreements to lean four hundred million for behavioral health. Although this item appears on the consent agenda, I think it's nothing less important to call out the significant investment that is being made here in behavioral health and by the county and our role of as administrators of the health services on behalf of the state and federal government. There have been many changes made in recent years regarding how we address these services and how they're administered, but I want to thank our CIO, our Health Services Director, Monica Morales, and our behavioral, behavioral health service director, Tiffany Contral Warren, and the entire HSA Health Services Agency staff for their dedication and determination. Many of the problems that the community members cite as public safety challenges have a long stem from untreated behavioral health issues. And so this is very, very important. And the level of these investments really demonstrates, I think, that we're working on to address those to the best of ability that we have. So thank you very much for, for doing that. A really great rant.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Just two brief comments on thirty-nine to thirty-seven. I'd like to thank Chair Cummings for filling those workforce board, development board positions. They've been baking for a minute. And also numbers sixty. I'm glad that the, the work on the river and the creeks is moving forward. And also would like to thank Supervisor Friend for all his work to make that happen on the Perfma board as well.
I just have a couple, couple of comments. Item number twenty-seven, certification of the elections. Just again, want to extend my gratitude towards Tricia Weber and all the folks who work under her and many volunteers in our community who helped us uphold a fair democratic process, especially as we see across the country, but how contentious elections have become, we were able to have a fair election here in our county. And also want to congratulate Kim De Cerpa and Monica Martinez on their victories in this election. Look forward to working with them in the coming years. Item number thirty-five, this was the item related to the letter to Governor Newsom related to homeowners insurance. And just want to thank Supervisor Friend again for putting that on. And also, I think it's also a reminder to us that when we did have the Insurance Commissioner and their staff visiting us, they had mentioned that the new plans would start rolling out in December. And so I think it'd be great in early part of next year to get an update on how that's rolling out and what kind of changes are coming forward to people so that we can make sure that folks are aware of their options as it relates to homeowners insurance. Item number forty-five, this is accept and file fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Item number 45, this is accept and file fiscal year 2023, 24. Childcare developer fee annual report and take related actions. I think it would be good for the board to get an update on how those funds are being spent. There's about $360,000 in that pot right now. And it's not clear that that money is actually getting out to childcare facilities. And so it'd be great to see and understand how the county is planning on engaging with childcare providers to ensure that these funds are getting into their hands. And then finally, just want to thank Rachel Fatoue for all her years with working, for working with the county. 35-year commitment to an institution is kind of unheard of these days. And so for folks who are able to dedicate a good chunk of their life to an institution, it's definitely worth thanking them and commending them on their many years of support for the county. So just want to thank Rachel and congratulate her for entering into her retirement and wish her the best of luck on her future endeavors. And so with that, we will, I'd like to entertain a motion. Item number 24 has been taken off of the agenda and postponed until the next meeting. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion for the.
I'll move consent with the additional direction on item 35 from Supervisor McPherson.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Pearson, or sorry, Supervisor Hernandez. I'd like to ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And just to kind of give a little bit of a run of show today, we've got a bunch of items on our agendas, many of which were held over due to loss of quorum at our last meeting. So we're going to try to get through this as efficiently as possible. The item that is related to rezoning will be heard at a time certain of 10:45. And so we're going to try to get through as many items as we can. We will need to take a break at 10:45 to, to hear item number 16. But with that, let's try to get rolling with this agenda. And so the next item, item number seven, hold public hearing to consider an ordinance of the board supervisors. The County of Santa Cruz adding new Santa Cruz County Code Section 13.10, 327 and 13.10.328, allowing two residential developments and urban lot splits in unincorporated areas of Santa Cruz County. Approved California Environmental Quality Act exemptions and take related actions. And so I'll turn it over to staff from CDI to lead us on this presentation, noting that we had a full presentation on this item. There were some language changes that were introduced previously. And this is now we're hearing this item again to incorporate those changes. So take it away.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Mark Connelly, Principal Planner in CDI Policy Planning. With me this morning to my right is Jacob Letts, Policy Planner in CDI as well. At the October 29th Board of Supervisors Meeting, staff presented this SB 9 ordinance to you. The board had some, they were very supportive of the ordinance, let me just say that in advance, but had some concerns specifically regarding how sensitive habitat was treated on parcels. So Jacob, this morning will provide a brief verbal report on the language change that staff has included into the ordinance for your consideration this morning. Jacob.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Supervisors. As directed by the board at the October 29th meeting, we are here today to provide an updated SB 9 ordinance to allow two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits in the unincorporated county for your consideration. The version of the ordinance that was presented on October 29th did not allow SB 9 developments if there was a sensitive habitat area on the parcel. The version of the ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission was more protective, protective of the ministerial process than state law. State law renders ineligible development on sites that are specified environmentally protected areas or subject to specified environmental hazards. In the ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission, the eligibility requirements were narrowed to exclude parcels with sensitive habitat areas as defined in County Code Section 1632.040. Recognizing that this version of the ordinance had potential to exclude projects that would have been eligible for ministerial processing under state law, staff now recommends an alternate version of the ordinance, which is more aligned with the intent of state law and state policy around improving access to housing. More properties will become eligible for both two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits while still maintaining the great environmental protection of the county that the county has set forth in Title 16 of our county code. Under the revised ordinance, parcels containing sensitive habitat areas and their buffers require sufficient mitigation in order to be eligible. This mitigation includes biotic approval through the biotic review process outlined in Santa Cruz County Code Chapter 1632 to establish appropriate development areas. The change in the ordinance can be seen on page 34 of the Agenda Packet. Exact language regarding sensitive habitat language can be found on this page under Santa Cruz County Code Section 1310, 327, C, 4, F. No other changes have been made to this ordinance since October 29th. Therefore, staff recommends that the board hold this public hearing, adopt the attached resolution, approve the ordinance in concept. And lastly, direct the clerk of the board to publish a summary of the proposed ordinance and schedule a second reading and final adoption of the ordinance on December 17th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll open up to members of the public. We'll, we'll open up the public hearing. For any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item, please approach the podium. We'll have two minutes.
Yes, hello, my name is James Yuen. All these 1310 changes, I recall about a year and a half ago, over 200, 2,004 pages of these gerrymandering changes. Certainly, this is going to be an opportunity for people like surveyors to make some money. You know, the national agenda, the state agenda, and certainly this county agenda is outstanding at bleeding the people actually dry to nothing. So could this help people in the short term to have a single dwelling unit divide into two? Certainly, it could work there, but you know, there were some, I took some notes on this. You know, the sensitive habitats, you know, when our water treatment is pumping up to 5 million gallons a day of treated sewage into our water table. And some of the EPA standards are off by a factor of 10,000. Got the nanotechnology, all the pharmaceuticals and stuff. So it's just an interesting gerrymandering to me. And I would love to, I don't want to call all of this crap, but it's fitting. So what else is going to go on the agenda? Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item here in chambers? Seeing on like to see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online. iPhone, your microphone is now available.
I usually comment. I enjoy the meeting. But I'm a resident of Boulder Creek and a father. And we built our own home. I'm happy to say that. It's not something that a lot of people have access to, I feel, in our county. And I'm glad that this board has taken steps to make housing more affordable and making it possible for new housing to be built. I want to say that I'm really happy to see this, this measure. I'm online. I'm looking forward to seeing many more things like this. Change has happened. I think one of the main things standing in the way of further development in my area is septic tanks. I love Boulder Creek. I think it's one of the most beautiful places in the world. And would love to see some of the areas, some of the core neighborhoods develop incrementally and move towards a place where we could afford to maybe do sewer. But in the meantime, that's not going to be possible because we just can't afford it. And the septic tanks that are being put in right now are not affordable to the average person that can build for themselves. So I think there's a lot of options that this county could consider and possibly do research on so that we could move forward with a small-scale local development. And some things that I think that that could be are composting toilets, incineration toilets, and some sort of extremely low, low toilet situation, like a septic tank, but that has no leach field that could be pumped on a regular basis. Yeah, I'm, I would hope to, that we could find some solutions to develop our area and make it better for everyone and give people an opportunity so that my kids someday can build their own home and afford to live here without having to go over the hill to make a living. Thank you for your time. Have a nice day.
iPhone, your microphone's now available. This is.
Hi, this is Michelle Wong.
Thank you. We can hear you. Michelle, are you there?
Ferv that the sheriff has not done the job when it comes to getting rid of the two meth labs up here that are directly on Logan Creek Road.
Ma'am, this is, ma'am, this is item number seven related to SB 9 rezoning. So if your comments are about that, then you can proceed. But if not, then we're going to have to move on to the next.
I am. I'm telling you that there's already a live observational study as far as sensitivity habitat of being able to apply a split urban lot. I say no because we already see what you guys do when it's happened for 20 years. For 20 years, there's already been illegal dumping of an outhouse on the creek. And there's already been meth labs that, as recent as last week, I called the sheriff and said, it gave my driver a headache. It is so strong. And the drivers and the sheriff said, well, we need drug traffic video. We can't come up. I said, you only need your damn nose. Get up there and do your job. So if you're talking that you want to be able to build more places in sensitive habitat, I'm going to tell you it doesn't work because I've already done observational study for 20 years that when I do call the sheriff because of the sensitive habitat where I reside smack dab on the creek, they're not doing a damn thing. There's an outhouse that's been dumped into the creek that goes to the river, that goes to the ocean. And there are two meth labs that goes into the creek, that goes into the river, that goes into the ocean. And the sheriffs have done nothing. So if you think that you can go ahead and increase this housing where for the last 20 years, you haven't been able to take care of what's already there, that's a really good live observational study. I have all kinds of times that I've called the sheriff and they've done nothing. So yeah, it's related to Section 163240 of sensitive habitat. You guys don't do your job. Don't be increasing the damage to the creek because you don't do your job now. So why are you going to be building more? And you owe me $150,000 for nothing. You've not done a damn thing.
Certainly. If you'd like to comment on this item, we're more than happy to approach the podium. But otherwise, I'm going to ask that you please not make comments unless you're called upon. Thank you.
Tim, your microphone's now available.
Thank you very much. This is Tim Delaney again. Interesting comments that I'm hearing here. You know, this, the affordable housing issue, it's a red state, blue state issue. It's a serious environmental issue. I mentioned to you folks numerous times about the enormous damage that's happening up in the Reno Tahoe area because folks are just building in this pristine watershed. They just want to rip the entire Tahoe Basin down. It's horrendous. And the thing is, is I want to remind all of you folks on the West Coast, you know, lifespans are longer over here in these blue states and Hawaii than, say, Louisiana and these deep red states. Okay, they live, they don't live as long. Part of the reason they don't live as long is because of the way they handle health and also the way they handle land in their community. So your water table here, it's precious. All the food and water and your lifestyle, some of you folks surf. I surf. I go into that ocean with my kids and everything. So if you build more, you add more toilets, more sinks, what that's going to do is there's going to be leaky seat, leaky pipes, leaky sinks and toilets. You're going to draw your water table down and it's going to become more polluted. And all that pollution migrates towards the ocean and our children swim in it. It's going to affect your ability to grow crops. It's going to damage our overall lifestyle and our lifespans here that we cherish on the West Coast. We live longer. Bruce is a good example of that. Okay, we live longer. Or we can cut our lifespans like these men over in Louisiana. You could take 20 years off of all of your lives sitting there. So I'm not so sure it's a good idea just to divide up parcels and increase building here in Santa Cruz County. Thank you very much.
Call in user two, your microphone is now available.
This sounds like a problematic ordinance that should be voted down. You heard the previous speakers, more pollution problems, also toxic building materials. The California Environmental Quality Act should be adhered to because it helps protect the environment upon which we all depend. And I see here on item seven, approved California Environmental Quality Act exemption. I see this with numerous projects that are obviously damaging to the environment, like with, with cell towers, with everything. We need to protect the environment. I urge a no vote on this. And what's behind it is the real estate corporate interests. We're living in a corporate dictatorship. I'm trying to think of policies here that you're adopting and are being adopted nationwide that do not have to do with corporate dictatorship over the public interest. I urge a no vote on this. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments and action. And I'll start with Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I agree with some of the comments, which is actually tough for me to actually say and given some of the comments that are made, but just in general, this is really a state action, not just SB 9, but SB 450 in particular, which, which updated this in ways that could have pretty significant impacts in the community. I mean, I appreciate planning's work to try and create a framework that still has environmental protections. But at the end of the day, this has the potential to be a pretty significant change in Santa Cruz County on the way that in particular, certain single-family lots are dealt with. Now, housing crisis is probably the most acute issue that the community is facing. But this is just straight up a takeaway of local control without any, without any real infrastructure or construct. And we have to comply. So this is one of those votes that isn't particularly pleasant to make. But at the end of the day, there isn't really any option or flexibility within this. We already explored where the flexibility was at the last meeting. And so I'd be prepared to move the recommended actions.
Supervisor Koenig.
I think Supervisor Friend said it well. I mean, these are largely state requirements. I mean, ultimately, I do think that this way forward, which, you know, ultimately empowers individual property owners to incrementally add housing in our community is, is probably going to be more tasteful and more appealing to the community at large than some of the larger projects that we've seen that we'll talk about later with item 16. I appreciate some of the recent changes made by the planning department, including the way to address environmentally sensitive areas. Still having requires for biotic reports, et cetera, but not outright ruling out those parcels and in support of the recommended actions and would be prepared to second the motion.
Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Friend. I'm really disturbed by how the state is trying to tell us how we want our communities to look in the future. But I do appreciate, it is what it is. It's a state-driven, as was mentioned. And I'm glad we have clarity about the impacts on the habitat areas that you've addressed. That's what we asked for. We're going to try to make this the best we can under the circumstances. I'm supportive of these efforts that you've brought forward with the caveat that the projects must continue to address the impacts from other codes, such as local agency management plan or the local management plan and related to septic impacts, which has a tremendous impact on my history in the San Rosa Valley. So I appreciate it. Don't really like it a lot, but it is what it is. And so we have to move forward and make it the best out of what we have.
Supervisor Hernandez.
I'll keep my comments short and brief. I pretty much agree with Supervisors Brendan Koenig. They pretty much said it all. And I do think it also provides a good solution to multi-generational housing for an aging population that we're going to be having. So I think it's a, a good thing. You know, it's a silver lining. Thank you.
I just had a couple of quick questions. I don't want to. I don't want to take too long on this, but I'm just wondering how high fire severity areas and watersheds were taken into account when kind of making this recommendation? Because I mean, I think, you know, as it relates to public health and safety, those are two things I think are really important to consider because we have, if we're increasing the density in some of these areas, especially as we've experienced a fire in our recent history and, you know, trying to get people out, those areas should have fire occur. And also just knowing that, you know, if you increase density in some of these rural areas, that there's the potential for impacts through, through septic on the watershed and which is ultimately a public health issue. How is that taken into account when trying to define what areas could and cannot be considered for these lot splits?
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yes, so we did consider both of those in the ordinance, as you know, even though this is largely, as you've all acknowledged, dictated by the state, our local provisions and requirements for environmental health still apply. So if somebody's connected, and this is largely the case in the US held urban service line areas, it makes it a lot easier, right? Because we have sewer and water connections in those areas that you're referring to that are in a little bit further out, may have some septic connections and water issues. It does not preclude a clearance from our environmental health department. So any applicant that comes in would have to go through that process, obtain a clearance. And that's both for septic and water. When it comes to these high fire areas, what we looked at was we have really good mapping technology from the state and our local partners of all the high fire severity areas. You know, this community has been wrought with a lot of fire disaster lately. So we're very keenly aware of that. So we took that into consideration and those critical fire areas, we have all of the protections involved in the application processing to make sure that the fire marshal regulations, fire protection, fire suppression are all included in every single project that will come forward. So that's really the best we can do, given the state statutes and requirements. But, you know, rest assured as a board that staff has this, these two issues firmly under control.
Thank you. I'm not really excited about what's before us. I do think that it's important that as we're moving into this new territory that we may be, you know, taken into consideration, you know, how lot splits in some of these really fire prone and flood prone areas could create problems in the future. So I'd like to see if we might be able to entertain a friendly amendment to exclude lot splits in the high fire severity zones, flood zones and watershed areas. And just see if that might be amenable to other members of the board.
I, I, I'm Natalie Kirkish, County Council for the Planning Department. I appreciate your comment. I just want to add to what staff has just said that under SB nine, which is incorporated into our ordinance, high fire hazard areas are excluded from eligibility for lot splits. And.
What about flooding?
Yes, additionally, there special flood hazard areas are excluded as well.
All right. With that, I just want to appreciate staff's work on this. I'd still remain more aligned with what the planning commission recommended. And so just appreciate all the work that you all put in. And so I'm going to register a no vote on this, just, you know, because I know that there's a lot of folks who are concerned with how quickly this is moving. And, you know, in the last, the last time this was heard Supervisor Friend and I voted to support the planning commission's recommendation. And so I'm going to register no vote just because I still align myself with that. But I'll turn to Supervisor Friend for a vote on this item.
Yeah, and I agree. I just feel that where we are is I need, we need us to be in compliance. But so that's the only reason why I'm moving forward with it. This is a tough situation, I think, but I appreciate and respect that position. So I made the motion Supervisor Koenig already has seconded.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote on item.
And before we vote to clarify, the friendly amendment that was just forward, correct? Right, thank you. Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
No, so that passes with Supervisor McPherson, Hernandez, Friend, Koenig voting in favor and Supervisor Cummings voting opposed. Thank you all for your time and thanks for your hard work on this and let's keep rolling. So with that, that moves us to item number eight on our regular agenda ordinance amending SCCC 7.128 and 13.10 non retail cannabis canopy allocations. I'll turn it over to Sam Beforeday for the presentation on this item.
All right. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Board members. I'm here to provide the board ordinance updates for consideration, which allow cannabis canopy expansion and removal of co-location requirements. In November of 2023, the board considered cultivation issues in the light of sustainable growth, economic development and responsible regulations to seek alignment with the sustainability plan updates. From there, board directed staff to seek community input. The board reviewed the community input and directed staff to propose ordinance changes. Before you today, our ordinance changes that will remove the co-location requirements, allow the full use of greenhouses on CA zone parcels and allow for canopy expansion following two years of operations with good standing. On November 13th of this year, the planning commission reviewed and approved the proposed ordinance language with some additional direction to provide this board more information during your decision making process today. The planning commission requested staff to assess the totality of ordinance changes to the existing license pool. Now, if every licensee expanded to the maximum extent possible, we could see an increase of 4.36 acres of cultivation countywide. The PC also requested staff analyze what would occur if every eligible parcel were to be licensed. To complete this analysis, we calculated the maximum potential canopy, which can be grown in each zone district based on maximum averages we currently could foresee. Now, we eliminated all sites that do not meet the minimum parcel size requirements from our analysis, as well as all sites that are three times the standard deviation of parcel size from our analysis, which is equivalent to removing all sites greater than 224 acres in the CA zone, 341 acres in the TP and 734 acres in the SU zone. Based on that, we calculated the total potential increase of canopy to be 145.6 acres countywide from a existing ordinance based on parcel percentage to the proposed ordinance. The planning commission requested staff to simplify the potential expansion with examples of currently licensed sites, which are included here. Please note canopy expansions based on the proposed language are significantly larger than what is possible based on our environmental setbacks and setbacks to adjacent uses. For instance, a 53.8 acre parcel in the CA zone could expand from two acres to 3.1 acres, which is approximately 5.7% of the parcel size. Lastly, the planning commission requested additional details about fertilizers and runoff use from cannabis cultivation operations versus traditional ag operations. Essentially cannabis operations have very similar requirements to traditional agricultural operations when it comes to pesticide management, sediment and erosion controls, as well as nitrogen management from fertilizers. The key difference between these types of agricultural operations are cannabis is very limited in what pesticides can be used. And implementation of the standards on cannabis sites began in 2018, while these standards were implemented in 2023 for traditional ag. Now, if the board pursues these ordinance changes, environmental protections and setbacks existing in code will remain the same. The co-location requirements will be removed. Canopy limits will be based on parcel size alone and compliance with setbacks. Greenhouses on the CA zone on parcels smaller than 10 acres will be able to be utilized to the maximum extent possible. Click again. Now, the ordinance before you today allows for a one-time expansion of up to 10% in the CA zone and 8.75% in the SU and TP zone districts. And these are only applicable for operators who remain in good standing with the county and are not subject to complaints for at least two years. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions the board or the public has on the proposed options.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation. I can see if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item. If so, please approach the podium and you'll have two minutes. Seeing none here.
That was a quick presentation. My name is still James Ealing Whitman. You know, during the Civil War, cannabis hemp was required to be grown by every farmer. Basically because of hemp rope, one of its unusual positive qualities is that it doesn't degrade. If seawater, the average battleship used a million and a half feet of hemp rope. So it seems once again that the only thing that government assumes that it's an authority and expert on is that it's an authority on anything. You know, we can thank William Randolph Hearst and $5 million and some easily manipulated folks for making cannabis illegal and hemp illegal growing in the United States that forever changed the health of everyone. You know, I must admit, there's a lot of crap being handed around. I mean, I probably have smoked more pot in the past eight months than at least the last eight years. I mean, probably 25 years ago, I decided I wasn't going to do that professionally at work because I'm not a good liar and I don't like Visine and stuff like that. If people really knew what was actually helping them and hurting them, maybe more people would be standing here. I don't think we'd be presenting conflicts. I'd rather present solutions. But the raw plant has CBDA and that has amazing healing qualities. Once it's processed and heated, that CBA is gone. But the natural product, it's really quite amazing. I was trying to convince my mother to start growing hemp for her more than two dozen cattle and hundreds of chickens. They have a ranch homestead in Texas. It became legal to grow hemp in Texas in 2018. So it's just kind of fascinating. I wish more people were reading between the lines and stuff. And I'm trying to be as polite as possible and maybe sometimes funny. Thank you.
Hello, board. My name is Jacob Farrar and I'm in the South County with a cannabis operation. Really appreciate these steps forward, gives us the opportunity to compete. Cannabis has been totally commoditized now, similar to traditional ag, but we are much higher regulated, much more costs involved in our operations. And the gains that we can make with additional, additional canopy certainly is incremental. But the cost associated with that is minimal to expand. So it's a real advantage for us, really appreciate it. And the, the negative impacts are very nominal. We've done the community research and because of the setbacks from public roads, setbacks from streams and rivers, we still can't grow the entire acreage. But this would allow us to, to expand and try to maximize our operation that has been struggling. So this is very helpful and I appreciate Sam for bringing it to you. And I appreciate all of you for considering it. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Nordo. I am a licensed cannabis operator here in Santa Cruz County. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm very supportive of it. And basically, all I can really do is speak for what we're trying to do. And we're trying to do, provide diversified medicine. We create medical products for people. And by having more canopy is not about creating more production. It's about being able to diversify and create or grow more variety of plants so we can meet our medical patients' needs. That's our real clear objective, as well as tourism, where we can bring in people who are interested in cannabis to visit, have an experience, learn more about cannabis, and then hopefully take that message out and spread the word. And Santa Cruz is an appropriate place for that. So that's what we're trying to do. My only, and again, I'm only speaking for myself, but my concern is have seen this pattern where, and I appreciate you guys bringing this option, this opportunity up. And I understand there's also some caution. We did all these group listening feedback sessions. I attended every single one. I've taken this very seriously. I've listened to the community. I didn't hear any complaints, but there's this pattern that's been going on that we do this, we put in all this work, we listen to the community and then at the last second, it's like Charlie Brown's football, just pulling the football. And we're trying to be good team players. I put it, I pay tons of taxes. I've put in so much time trying to help be an advocate in the community. And then I kind of feel like I'm going to sit down here and then there's going to be a manufactured crisis that's going to then tell us why this is a bad idea. And I'd appreciate also if Supervisor Friend would share what you told me in person one time, that you support what I'm doing and that you appreciate and understand. I'm trying to do something positive here. And I'd appreciate if you share that publicly instead of just privately.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public here who would like to speak to us in person? Seeing none, I'd like to see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Speaker, we have, yes, Chair, we have speakers online. Rob, your mic is now available.
I, yeah, I just wanted to speak in support of this item. I'm a cannabis operator here in Santa Cruz, in Watsonville on CA land. This is important to us, not just because it removes the co-location requirement, which is kind of unnecessary at this point, as Sam has spoken to, but also the economy as a scale of us being able to increase the canopy size on our parcels is really important. As one of the persons spoke to in person, the cost for us to operate additional canopy is not that great on the parcel that we're on right now. But if we have to look at increasing our canopy by acquiring new parcels, that's a big expense. And that also spreads the cultivation out across the county more than just allowing additional canopy on our parcels. I just want to say that this is an important thing to keep the businesses that are operating without problems, continuing to operate. And this is probably one of the biggest things that can help our current operators continue to be successful. We've had so many operators go out of business that anything that we can do to help them is important. Thank you.
Hi, phone, your microphone is now available.
Thank you. Registered nurse dedicating to healing for the last 45 years to this community, only to come home to hee haw hell with the illegal grow, stolen my water. I don't know how you guys are going to regulate that. The guy has stolen my 10,000 gallon water tank. I don't know where you're going to get water for all of these plants. Back in 1935, cannabis was on the hospital formulary. Registered nurses have been pushing for legal cannabis grow. Richard Nagabon has an illegal cannabis grow where he was riding his motorcycle directly in front of the sheriff. The sheriff knew he was going up to his illegal grow. The sheriff has assisted him in stealing my 10,000 gallon water tank. You know that it's a felony to steal water for illegal grow and the sheriff doesn't do their job. It's easy for them to come and investigate and see that he has stolen for the illegal grow. In addition to that, the way that he is growing is not regulated for the soil, the nitrogen or any of the pesticides or any of the, the process that he's doing, let alone the drug traffic on my driveway. So this is an illegal grow that's going on. You guys need to figure out the flip side. If you're going to allow cannabis to happen, to reinforce the laws that are going to protect for the legal grow. I'm not opposed to cannabis. Like I said, registered nurses have been pushing for it. It was on our formulary. I am against illegal cannabis grow where my 10,000 gallon water tank has been stolen and redirected for an illegal grow. The sheriff knows about it and the sheriff hasn't done a damn thing. For this felon living in an illegal dwelling, you guys do something. So there's always another side of the issues that you're bringing and you're not addressing the negatives.
Tim, your microphone is now available.
Hello, thank you so much again. I am 100% supportive of this item. I, I, it's a wonderful item. Members of my family, you know, older members, unfortunately, they didn't have these sorts of options presented to them. So they suffered tremendously. So yeah, I'm supportive of it. And also, just so you know, when it comes to vaccines and things like that, I don't support people being forced to take a vaccine.
Sir, let me, let me stop you for a sec. This item is related to cannabis. Cannabis is not an item related to vaccines. So please keep your comments associated with the item.
No worries. So in regards to cannabis, okay, I, you know, cannabis or any sort of drug like that, people shouldn't be forced to use those things. But it should be open to the general public and we should should be able to use them in our medical professions and everything. And that's why I'm highly supportive of this. So anyways, I just want to express my support for the measure. And, and also I hope that, that the county can do things with the state and federal law enforcement to properly mitigate issues here where people are taking advantage of these ordinances and are creating illegal grows and stealing people's water and so on. And it doesn't just happen, you know, it might not be just cannabis, but some other crop as well. So that's a real concern. So other than that, though, the item I'm 100% supportive. And I just want to remind you, this is a Republican and Democrat sort of thing. And this is what makes people Californians, and which is very different from other states where they have shorter lifespans. Okay, so other states like Texas and whatnot, they can learn a lot from the people of California because we live 15 to 20 years longer than them. Okay, anyways, thank you so much.
Call in user two, your microphone is now available. Call in user two, as a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Hi, again, I noticed that it says sequo notice of exemption. And you've heard previous callers, sequas should be abided by. I think there are a lot of problems with water, with toxins, and that there's an overabundance of cannabis that's available. I think it does have a negative impact on the environment. And I read an article recently in Weston A. Price publication. It was kind of shocking. I don't have it in front of me. Westonaprice.org, Wise Traditions. It was an account of a teenager who died during the lockdown. And she and her friends, a few who got together, got into.
Likes to keep her comments on this item, so please.
I'm saying it's a problem in many ways. I urge a no vote. Thank you.
Jonathan, your microphone is now available.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address supervisors today and thank you for all the hard work you continue to do on this issue. You know, as a cannabis operator and an activist, it's been a wild journey over the past many years to be able to continue to have this conversation and be included in the development of ensuring that us and other operators in the county are able to remain competitive, you know, is very assuring. And, you know, I share same concerns about, you know, other non-legal operators and look forward to hopefully some resolution with that. Because as a legal operator paying extraneous taxes and all of the other operating expenses for the business, you know, it's been difficult. And, you know, this opportunity really allows us to be able to continue to establish economies of scale and to be able to maintain competitive, you know, in this incredibly competitive marketplace, you know. Something to the tune of over 95%, certainly. I've, I've been told potentially as much as 99% of other operators that existed at the turn of legalization, you know, have either, you know, had to, had to shut down or file bankruptcy or in receivership or some other economic, you know, end to their, their story. And, you know, we are incredibly honored to continue to be a part of our community and to support the production of safe cannabis and make that available to the people of California. So I urge you to vote yes on this issue so that as the few remaining operators remain are able to be able to compete in the larger market here in California. So thank you so much for your time and consideration.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, thank you. For all your comments for the folks who've showed up today on this item. I know this item was initially introduced by supervisors Koenig and Hernandez. I'll open up to you all for opening comments on this item.
Thank you, Chair. Now, as has been said many times by folks speaking during public comment, these are really pretty incremental changes, but ones that will have a significant impact and improvement for folks in the cannabis industry in our county. You know, it, it just reduces the regulatory burden from one that arguably is pretty onerous today to, I think, something that's more manageable. It's something that we heard folks in this industry actually ask for, which is why Supervisor Hernandez and I actually introduced these proposed changes to begin with. And I mean, I think most of all, it does ultimately what the board has said we want done, which is really try to consolidate cannabis cultivation within our community by rewarding operators who are doing, have a significant grow, but in a way that is, of course, environmentally responsible because it follows all our laws, but also not generating any neighbor complaints, right? So many of these, the, the additional grow area is could, you know, be awarded by discretion by our cannabis licensing officer, but only in cases where there have not been any significant complaints. And so really, I think that this actually helps through incentives to accomplish the goals that this board has set out. So for all those reasons, I've been in favor of the actions today.
Supervisor Hernandez.
I think Supervisor Koenig said it all, but I just wanted to add if, you know, illustrate that with further percentage of tax, cannabis tax, it's used for enforcement, for illegal enforcement, correct?
Cannabis business taxes, they actually go to the general fund. So the revenues received through licensing are what fund the cannabis licensing office. Now, the sheriff's office does assist with enforcement as needed when complaints are received and they actually receive complaints directly. So the taxes do not relate to the enforcement effort.
Okay, so business license.
Yes, the business licensing fees, which the operators pay, fund our department and then any enforcement and cost recovery fees we have are also revenues for our department.
Thank you. Supervisor McPherson.
Thank you for, for the huge important, the planning commission to do this additional work. But I voted against expanding canopies in September and I have to do so again today. I, I think even after looking at the additional information recommended by the commission, that this is not going to substantially support the industry or increase county revenue. And even if it does, I don't know that it's worth the additional potential impacts on the neighboring parcel and the community character itself. So I'm going to be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I will address that, Mr. Nordahl, that I do believe that you are, as I mentioned, you, I believe that you're a good actor and I believe that you've been working with the county since day one. I also said to you at that time that that isn't across the industry necessarily the case, which is why I've had a number of these issues and it disproportionately impacts my district. I do wish that there was, I mean, quite frankly, I wish that the state hadn't created the regulatory framework that they'd created and the taxation they created. I think that the county gets a disproportionate amount of the blame for things that are actually outside of our hands. And one thing I'll just lightly push back on that you had said, I think that this county has very much over the course of my 12 years, created a framework when no other county created a framework, by the way, both on dispensing and cultivation. And then as over the course of time in an iterative sense, as illustrated by the number of votes I've lost on this, not pulled the football away, but actually expanded access and opportunity. There is a broader market at play that the county can't individually address that you're engaged in. There's beyond the black market, there's a commercialization of it, there's the massive supply in other parts of the state, as you know. So we wouldn't be able to create a regulatory framework that would just simply support the industry in a way that I think that the industry seems to think. And we definitely wouldn't be able to do it in a way that would support the competing goals that that were created in advance of some of these board members that are currently on, which is environmental and neighborhood protections on top of that. So I'm in agreement with Supervisor McPherson. And I voted against this in September, but that doesn't take away from what I think about the work that you're doing and the tourism work that you're doing. I just think that the industry is not a monolith, as you know, and has gone out of its way. There's a number of players that have gone out of their way. And we have auditors that, that we had to create in order to showcase this and we have enforcement in order to showcase this and they're still doing these things because not everybody is you. If it was you, it might be a different story and I do appreciate the work that you're doing. That's just not the case. It's definitely not the case in a number of actors throughout my district, although there are good actors too in my district that are here today. But I just want to make sure that you got that public acknowledgement and also recognize that you're a part of a broader narrative that isn't quite as, as good of actors as you are. So appreciate that.
I'll keep my comments brief. Of course, I just want to thank Supervisor Koenig and Hernandez for bringing this to our attention on behalf of the cultivators in our county. And I want to thank staff for all their hard work on this. Initially, when this first came forward, I was a little blindsided, didn't really know what the changes were going to be, which is why I was supportive of staff going out and having community meetings and getting input from the community. And, you know, what really is compelling for me to, to support this today is the fact that we really don't have any community opposition here. And so given that most of the comments here have been in support of this, I'm happy to support moving forward. And as, with the one condition, which is that I do think that two years is a little bit short of a timeframe for being able to demonstrate that you're in good standing with the county. I think three years would be maybe something I'd feel comfortable landing on, especially given the fact that what we really want to try to do is protect the local folks who've been cultivating our community for longer periods of time and not having new people come in and then being able to benefit from this expansion. You know, with only demonstrating two years of, of, of good standing. And so I'd hope that be accepted as a friendly amendment. But with that, and especially knowing that in five minutes we have a time to get a certain item, I'm happy to support what's been proposed today with that friendly amendment of extending it from two years of good standing to three years of good standing.
Before anything, I need to, yeah, I need to hear whether someone's going to.
Sure. So, yeah, I'm supportive of that. I've been all moved to the recommended actions, incorporating the friendly amendment by the chair to change the period for discretionary increases in the candy limit from two years to three years.
Second, what we're going to have to do is identify in the ordinance where that's addressed. And maybe we can, maybe, maybe Mr. LaForte can address that specific place. And if we can't address that specific place in a clear and transparent way, then we won't have to come back for a first read. But if that's not possible, then we'll have to come back for a first read.
We will need to make a change to 1310650. Let me make sure I have the code reference right. C three H specifically the where is the footnote? Uh, hold on, maybe it's not there. Definitely in 7.128. 7.128 C one A two. It would say after three years instead of two. So that's the second word would be edited. And then E two, same edit, after two years, we become after three years. F three, be after two years, we would become after three years. And then if I may have a moment to look at 1310, just to make sure I didn't miss it. It is 1310 H, I'm sorry, 1310 C three H, within the table itself. The first box would, for the class CA license, it would change from after two years to after three. And then on the second, third, fourth, on the fifth box, it would, or it says TP, class TP, it would change to after three years. And then on the sixth and seventh box, both of those would be the same change after two years to be, would become to after three years. And that will take care of every reference to, to effectuate the motion.
Great. And I just want to make sure that the clerk has, is that clear to the clerk?
Thank you. I'm showing that we'll be making the correction from two to three years in code sections 7.128 C one A two, 7.128 E two, 7.128 F three. And then in 1310650, section C three and H in the individual lines of the table as specified.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, we will give a motion by Supervisor Koenig, seconded by Supervisor Hernandez. And with that, I'll take a roll call vote on the item with the additional language as, as was just stated.
Certainly, Chair. Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
No.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson. And Cummings.
Aye. That passes with Supervisor Hernandez, Koenig and Cummings voting in favor and Supervisors Friend and McPherson voting in opposition. And with that, that will take us to our time certain item, which is to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of 30 parcels, associated amendments to the general plan land use designation for 27 of 30 parcels. We'll turn it over to our planning staff from CDI to, to conduct this presentation.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisors Stephanie Hanson, Assistant Director in Community Development and Infrastructure. With me today is Mark Connolly, Principal Planner in the Policy Section, and Suzanne Issey, Principal Planner in the Housing Section for your Friendly Housing Element Team. Today, the board will conduct a hearing on the proposed rezonings and general plan land use map amendments in order to implement the 2023 housing element. At your last meeting on November 19th, there was public testimony on this matter during the public comment period. However, the board did not consider or take any action on November 19th, so we've rescheduled it to today. Due to a small error in the noticing for three of the parcels included in the ordinance, we've handed out a revised set of recommended actions for the board's motion. These would remove parcels 030, 061, 06, parcel 03012161 and parcel 03022146 from the ordinance and parcels 03006106 and 03012161 from the resolution. These parcels will be moved to batch B for consideration next year. Just as a reminder, these rezonings are one of the best actions that the board can take to try to improve our housing crisis here in the county. But that'll turn it over to Mark to give. But that I'll turn it over to Mark to give the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good morning, Board, again. Nice to see you all. By now, you are all familiar with our RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment Numbers. Our magic number is four thousand six hundred and thirty four units. This slide here before you shows the county's RENA for the period that'll take us through the next eight years, twenty thirty one, and indicates the total number of units that could be developed on existing sites in the unincorporated county under current zoning, which is approximately four thousand one hundred and sixty seven units. And that's a little shy of our RENA allocation of forty six thirty four by four hundred and sixty seven units. And nine hundred and thirty one units shy of our RENA plus the mandated by the state ten percent buffer, which takes us to a grand total of five thousand ninety eight units. So just a reminder, that buffer, that ten percent buffer is to ensure that there is adequate capacity should some of the sites not develop as we plan for them to be. So how do we address this shortfall? So to address it, there's nine hundred and thirty one units we need to plan for. So the housing sites inventory includes the twenty twenty three housing element parcel, total parcels of seventy five within the county's urban service line. That would require rezoning in order to increase the unit capacity in the inventory by that total of at least nine hundred and thirty one units. Just a reminder, our requirement or obligation is to plan for these units, not to build these units. So the housing sites inventory is appendix E of the housing element, which is attached in your staff report. So where does this rezoning program come from? Comes from three programs that are found in our housing element, and they are on the screen before you hear. Housing Program H one B applies to parcels that must be rezoned to accommodate the number of units needed to meet the RENA. So these parcels have projected yields of at least five low and or very low income units. H one C is the second program in the housing element that drives this effort, and it requires ministerial processing of the eligible projects on certain sites in the rezoning list. Projects on these sites must provide at least twenty percent of the total units as affordable housing to get ministerial processing. Program H one C also applies to properties that were included in the inventory as sites for lower income housing in one or more of the prior housing cycles, but were not developed during that cycle. So the Board approved the ordinance on August thirteenth for the Ministerial Combining District. That took effect on September twenty seventh outside the coastal zones. Still on a review, this year we'll transmit that to the coastal zone for their review. Program H one J wraps it up and implements Senate Bill ten, provides for rezoning of parcels to allow up to ten units on qualifying infill parcels located in the low density neighborhoods. So this helps the county to provide needed missing middle housing, which is a nice tool to have to build duplexes, triplexes, and even quads into some of these single family zoned districts and neighborhoods. So this slide is just simply a visual reminder of the number and type of units that result from the rezoning effort. Although the county needs nine hundred and thirty one units to meet our shortfall, as expressed in the previous slide, if the rezoned parcels were to be built out to their maximum potential, there would be two thousand two hundred and sixty two additional total units. And while there is a surplus of above moderate units, these are the needed units to support the inclusion of the lower income units in the market rate housing development. So really important to note here that about half are the low and very low income categories. Really quickly here, this is just a graphic to describe the unit number and type that results from our rezone effort. So staff determined that the appropriate approach to this rezone effort would be to break the rezones into two different batches, so batch A and B. What's important today is although we have all these units, what's before you is only batch A today. Batch B will come next year. So where are these units? So this is map one. This this shows the four parcels that are in the north Live Oak neighborhood in the Live Oak Planning Area. They are located on Paul Sweet Road, Thurber Lane, and Stanley Avenue. Next map here shows you eight parcels that are in the south Live Oak neighborhood. This is also in the Live Oak Planning Area, but these parcels are on Rodriguez Street, Seventeenth Avenue, Bosworth Lane, Seventh Avenue, Madison Lane, and three on Shanticleer Avenue. And again, these are also in your staff report. So this map shows three parcels that are in the south Live Oak and Twin Lakes area, also in the Live Oak Planning Area. These parcels, two of them are on Seventeenth Avenue, and then one is the Andrew Lane Braemer Street parcel here that you see on the map. So this map here is representing the lots that we're going to take out of the inventory today that will not be in consideration. These are the three parcels that were the result of the noticing error. We will also make a clarification and change to both the ordinance and the resolution, just so you know. These sites are the Cal Fire Site, the former Nissan Site, and a site next to Beer Thirty on Main Street. This map shows you three parcels that are in the Pleasure Point area, also in the Live Oak neighborhood. All of them are on Thompson Avenue. Map six shows you six parcels. These are all in the SoCal neighborhood and planning area. Two of them on Monterey Avenue, one on SoCal Drive itself, two more on the north side of Monterey Avenue, and one kind of smack dab in the middle of the SoCal Drive area. This map is just one parcel on SoCal Drive. It's in the Freedom Area in the Aptos Planning Area. It's adjacent on SoCal Avenue, just adjacent to the freeway there, on SoCal Drive, nine 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 zero SoCal Drive. Here's the South County map. This one contains eight parcels. It's color coded for your convenience and understanding here. As mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended to remove five sites. So those sites are demarcated here in red. They're also the first five sites on the table, eight twenty nine through thirty three. The background here is the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the twenty fifth and recommended that the rezones and the general plan amendments for batch A. Several residents came out from the Green Valley area and five of them from the Primrose area property shown in red in this map recommended these be removed. Planning Commission went ahead and followed through with that recommendation to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Supervisors. Therefore, the Planning Commission's recommendation for the rezoning of the parcels turns from thirty five to thirty as presented to you before the amendment today. And the ones that were not affected are the two on Little Way Lane and Green Valley Road in blue on this map. So what do we do to tell the community this was happening? As you all know, we live in a world of disclosure and robust community outreach. So we did an enhanced outreach effort here that was above and beyond our code requirements. So this was both for the Planning Commission and the Board. The noticing procedures included a newspaper, display ad, social media posting, also libraries, and the affected parcels, as well as notices sent to cities and county agencies. Also, in this new era of getting information to the public, staff used social media as a platform. We used both the county and CDI platforms. And what we did was we used a list, what we call a, or CBOs, our community based organizations, running lists that county staff in the planning departments had for quite some time, and we keep kind of adding to it as we do more and more project outreach. What we used in both the county and the CDI platforms was a toolkit that we pushed out to these CBOs so they could include it in their social media to their particular community and members. So we think that really did a great job of going above and beyond there. Also, important to note that these rezoning noticing efforts were performed in both Spanish and English, and that was also the case for the posting on properties. So what are a couple of other procedural requirements? This effort doesn't go without CEQA review as well as tribal consultation. So in November twenty twenty three, the county prepared an addendum to an EIR that was prepared for the Sustainability Update to addressing the environmental impacts under CEQA. This addendum, the document analyzed the impacts associated with the adoption of the housing element, the programs necessary for implementation, and the necessarily necessary general plan and zoning amendments. No new significant impacts were identified beyond those previously addressed in that Sustainability Update EIR. In keeping with the tribal consulting requirements pursuant to Senate Bill eighteen, on May second, twenty twenty four, county staff sent a letter to the Native American Heritage Commission and AHC to solicit a list of tribes and cultural site information. And on May fifteenth, twenty twenty four, staff sent the letters, and we've gotten no request for consultation to date. So here's a summary of what we're looking for the Board to give us today. In closing, staff recommend recommends that the Board conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of twenty seven parcels and associated amendments to the general plan land use designations for twenty five of those twenty seven. This reflects those removed through the noticing error. Adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use designation map for those twenty five and removing parcels zero three zero dash zero six one dash zero six, zero three zero dash one two one six one, and accepting the CEQA addendum to the Environmental Impact Report. Approve and concept and ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Cruz, amending the county zoning map and changing the zoning designations of twenty seven parcels to implement the twenty twenty three housing element. And direct the clerk of the Board to publish a note of post the notice of proposed ordinance summary as revised that would remove these three parcels, zero three zero dash zero six one dash zero six, zero three zero dash twenty one, one twenty one dash sixty one, and zero three zero dash two two one dash forty six pursuant to applicable legal requirements. And last, direct the clerk of the Board to schedule a second reading and final adoption of the ordinance as revised to remove these parcels on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. This concludes our presentation. Staff can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We're going to start by opening up the public hearing to the members of the public. So if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item, please approach the podium at this time, and you'll have two minutes.
Hello.
If you can, if you can pull the mic down. There you go. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Anderson. My family has been residents of the Live Oak area since nineteen seventy four, over fifty years. I'm speaking to support the rezoning of two zero nine one Seventeenth Avenue, which is parcel, parcel number zero two six one two two three six. I have been a member of the United Methodist Church of Santa Cruz since nineteen ninety two. The church is the owner of the property at two zero nine one Seventeenth Avenue. The church is excited about working with Envision Housing to develop multifamily rental housing on the Seventeenth Avenue property. The goal of the church is to achieve the highest number of affordable units reasonably possible. We are committed to having significant shared outdoor and indoor spaces with the hope of facilitating the development of community. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Janine Roth. I'm a member of Santa Cruz EMB. I'm one of the multiple members of Santa Cruz EMB that signed a petition that you got recently. It's simply to urge you to approve the rezoning packet in front of you today. For over three years, you've reviewed and approved housing plans. That includes a sustainability update and the housing element. You've had many community discussions, you've had many reviews and many approvals by the Planning Commission and by yourselves. This decision today is straightforward. Rezoning doesn't build housing, but it is a critical step. Delaying it delays delays the design and the construction of homes that our community desperately needs. These homes mean fewer commuters on Highway One, more places for workers and families near their jobs and schools. As Charles said in our petition, additional housing is an urgent need for my family and for nearly all my friends in Santa Cruz. Please accelerate the rezoning as quickly as possible and also look towards enacting faster permit approval processes. So please follow through on those commitments that you've already made and approve this rezoning, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Elaine Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Santa Cruz County, and it's good to be here this morning. Today, you will be considering a proposal to rezone about thirty parcels. This rezoning effort is crucial for addressing our community housing needs as it will create opportunities for the development of new affordable housing across the county. Santa Cruz County is at a crossroads. We've seen firsthand how the lack of housing impacts every aspect of our community. From local businesses unable to retain employees to families being priced out of neighborhoods they've called home for generations. This rezoning initiative is not just about parcels and zoning maps, it's about people. It's about ensuring that every community member has a fair chance to live, work, and thrive in their community. I urge you to consider the profound impact this decision will have today. By approving this rezoning, you are taking a meaningful step toward providing hope and stability to the families and individuals counting on us. You are showing that Santa Cruz County is a place where we believe in opportunity, equity, and a shared commitment to the well-being of our community. Thank you for your time and dedication to this urgent matter. Have a great day.
Any other members of the public hearing person who'd like to speak to us on this item?
I'm Sibley Simon, President of New Way Homes. And I just want to add lots more support for moving this forward. I think staff's done a lot, a ton of work and a great job for years now, as was said, to get to this point. And there's so many more points to come, but I hope this can be an easy decision to move forward. I do hope you'll look at, it's tough to see that at every step, parcels get taken out. You know, when we're really trying to meet the really important goals of having enough housing. And so I hope you'll have looked at whether some of those parcels taken out at the Planning Commission stage can be rezoned as well. But also, I think one of the most important things is not only do this today, but hope that the second batch doesn't take a long time. You know, I hope we really get that done next year as well. So thanks so much for making this a real housing element. I see a lot of jurisdictions not taking this seriously and doing the right work that's going to enable housing. And I think this is a good plan to make that happen successfully. Thanks.
Any other members of the public hearing person who'd like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online. Brian, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Brian Shields. I'm a field rep with Carpenter's Local six four six, covering Santa Cruz County. I wanted to reach out and and be in support of the rezoning of these parcels. I think it's important, though, and the state has sort of set the tempo for zoning flip or the development of parcels such as this with bills such as AB twenty eleven, the Affordable Housing and High Road Jobs Act, which on the back end which on the back end allows for apprenticeship, healthcare, prevailing wage, and labor compliance. You know, provisions like that are important. SB 4, which has also been nicknamed Yigby, yes, in God's backyard, is another bill which has passed a law now, and it again has on the backend prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, and labor compliance. Also, SB 423, which is the Scott Wiener bill that replaces SB 35, it has the ability now to build less than, has the ability now to build less than 100% affordable housing. And in that, it replaced skilled and trained with with these same four tenants, the prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, and labor compliance, and it allows for the, not only for the increased housing to be built in our community, but also for the, that, that construction to influence and build up the families of the construction workers in our community, you know, it's sort of a lost investment if we don't allow for the opportunity for people who live here to work on it. Thank you.
Tim, your microphone's now available.
Well, thank you again for allowing me to speak today. So some other points I wanted to make in regards to this item and impacts on other, you know, regions that have, that are trying this, exactly what you're doing right now. Tahoe Basin, again, traffic is, you know, it chokes the roads, and everybody's pounding the table for affordable housing and trying to find a way for people to be able to live and work in the region. And they have largely embarked on a course where they're wiping out the environment, and the same thing goes for Reno, Nevada. It's appalling, the amount of land that's being just ripped to shreds in all these mega huge development projects. A lot of these developers, they want nothing to do with individual homeowners that own single-family homes. What they want is a huge tract and 150 units. So the thing is, is they're building, building, building the way. And even when I try to go out for a day skiing, you know, I have to, you know, basically request a parking spot. I have to secure that now, which is very different. You can't just drive to Palisades and park. You gotta get the parking spot before you can go ski. So that's the only way that they could try to contain some of this traffic. And all the residents around the Tahoe Basin are enormously fearful in this high alpine forest in regards to how they're going to get out of there with all this construction going on, and all these folks thinking that they can have affordable, cheapable housing so they can have a job in their community, and all these people are being pumped in from elsewhere. It's just wiped out the place, and it's a cycle, a vicious cycle that they're in with developers. So be careful. You can wipe out easily all the good things that you have now, and it can be much worse in the future. Okay? Anyways, thank you so much. You take it easy.
ER, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. My name is Bryce Root, and I'm a neighbor of Site ID A24 or 5606 SoCal Drive. And I'm a little bit shocked that there aren't more citizens speaking up. At the recent Planning Commission meeting, it took an hour and a half or two hours of residents to speak. So I'm wondering where everyone is. I'm wondering about the social media per se. But anyways, with regards to 5606 SoCal Drive, it's right against the Riparian Corridor where there's Creek, Creek that feeds into Noble Creek that is famously what flooded Capitol Village a while back. There's a great deal of wildlife that goes through there, and I'd hate for 150 units or more to be basically put in place and with trees and just the whole kind of the old farm is kind of how we all refer to it as, just ripped apart. We're seeing it right now with the retirement home that's being built, and just we've seen much like the mobile home park that spoke up at that Planning Commission meeting previously, the wildlife kind of migration or kind of activity has lessened just with that taking place. So I can't imagine the putting a whole nother development next to that. So I ask that you just take a peek at actually what's going on with each specific parcel, because I think this is kind of a blanket rubber stamp from what everything that I'm seeing. After two hours of people speaking up, it was rubber stamped by the planning commission. So hopefully that doesn't happen here, and each parcel's looked at, because there's different elements you need to consider for each. This is a big one next to a Riparian Corridor. So thank you for my time.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn to my left this time to start with Supervisor Kirsten to see if you have any questions or comments on this item.
No, thank you so much for the staff, the planning commission, for all the work that you've done to implement these, again, state-approved housing element. It's important to note that although these rezones could help address us, our arena numbers, as you've mentioned, they really don't make bad development occur. We've seen a lot of housing go up in the city of Santa Cruz, mostly downtown in recent years. Not all of it has been appreciated by many residents, I guess, but for the county and what the state is mandating us to do, this is one step the county can take to prepare for greater density in our urban area core as well. So I, I really do appreciate the work that you've done on this. It's, again, troubling to me that the state is going to really direct how we're going to look in the future, it looks like, in some areas. But this is what it is, and this is what we're going to be facing in the future. We do need housing, and I do appreciate the real hard work that you've done to make this happen, to see how we can implement this in the best way possible.
Supervisor Hernandez.
I too would like to thank CDI and planning and the Planning Commission and all the work that they've done so far. You know, this is a, the big issue to create housing, you know, I think everybody's talking about affordability. This gives us the opportunity for, you know, the community to have housing and hopefully decrease the affordability level or increase the affordability level so that folks can build that generational wealth that they need with a home. And so I want to thank you guys again for all the work that you guys done.
Supervisor Conning.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. I remember the public asked, you know, or commented that we're seeing some parcels taken out, and, you know, three parcels were, I think, proposed to move to Batch B today. Could staff just clarify, are those actually being removed from the process, or they just being postponed to the Batch B and for what reasons?
You're right. The three parcels are just being moved to Batch B due to an error in the noticing, for some reason, incorrect parcel numbers was put in the notice for those. One of the parcels, though, is, has been purchased by Central Fire. They have their agreement accepted by the owner. We'll keep a close eye on that one. Part of what we're looking to do with Batch B is to look at all the parcels again, do the analysis to make sure we still need to rezone those, given that we are having some developments that are exceeding our expectations in terms of the number of units being built. So there is a chance that with that one, we certainly would look at it. We might try to switch out some other parcels for it.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just to clarify that, the sites will still be considered. And I do see Chief Nee from Central Fire here. Thanks for coming today. And I think if there was any use that is of higher priority than residential additional homes, it would be public safety. And so we'll definitely take that into consideration as we look at rezoning these sites in the future. You know, most of the sites being considered today, I mean, the vast majority are in the first district, but that's not to say that the first district is the only one doing its part as far as adding housing. I mean, when I've had discussions with community groups around any one of these particular sites, I have to point out, well, actually, the city of Santa Cruz has its own Rena number. The city of Watsonville, the city of Capitola, and Scotts Valley all have their own Rena numbers. And so consistently, we hear, or I hear, why put it here? Put it in the downtown Santa Cruz, put housing in downtown Watsonville. The reality is, we are doing that, too, that pretty much every significant site in the county is, especially ones near major transportation corridors are being considered. And when we talk about, you know, moving certain parcels to Batch B, it's only because we're not ready to consider them yet. It's not because they're being removed from the process. I mean, a couple of the sites that we've, I've heard particular concern about, for example, 2091 17th Avenue and 5606 SoCal Drive, you know, the reality is that both of those sites are actually on some of the largest roads in the district, or really within the county. They're on arterials, SoCal Drive and 17th Avenue, both being arterials. You know, SoCal Drive is one of the only ways to get from east to west, and 17th Avenue is one of only three routes in Live Oak to be able to get from the highway to the ocean. So as much as I would love to be able to say, well, no, actually, those sites are not sufficient for housing, or this or that, or try to, try to address some of the specific concerns of the surrounding neighborhood, the reality is, there's many, pretty much every site on here is, you know, maybe on a smaller road, on a local street, or a minor collector that is actually arguably, you know, even worse location for housing. And so without any kind of rubric to address the individual sites, I think we're left saying we have to move forward with all of these. And of course, the state really is forcing us to move forward with all of these, because we've already seen firsthand that the state is happy to kick us into noncompliance with our housing element. Just, I think, last week, there was a meeting about 157 unit project up on Graham Hill Road in District 5. There's a builder's remedy project, and that was submitted not because the county did anything wrong as far as submitting our housing element. We got it in on time on November 14, 2023, but the state tried not to certify that housing element until April 12. And as a result, we were kicked into builder's remedy with, in early 2024, and this application on Graham Hill Road was submitted on April 11. So it's sort of similar to the SB 9 item we heard earlier. We don't have a lot of choice in how this moves forward, because otherwise, we'll actually lose even more control than we have today. I think, actually, that's one of the benefits of the rezonings is that, you know, projects that proceed according to our local zoning will still be subject to our various zoning codes, including three-story height limit with setbacks on the third floor, our local parking requirements, the things that we've determined throughout the sustainability update is the way we want to see our community develop. And so while I know that the rezoning is being proposed today are not appealing to everyone, they are the best option we have ahead of us. All that is, you know, I don't want those comments to express that we should not, or make it seem like I'm opposed to adding housing in our community. The reality is, I think we very much do need to add housing in our community. We, arguably, it's the top issue. It impacts our ability to hire all kinds of county employees, whether that's in behavioral health, or, you know, in law enforcement, or fire, and, or teachers. And so really, if we are going to provide the basic infrastructure in this county, we need more housing to ensure we have people that are willing and able to take those jobs. You know, most recently, I had a community meeting about a site that's not actually on the rezoning list today, but being considered for housing on Thurber and SoCal. One of the major concerns that came up was, well, how are the schools going to handle the additional capacity from this, from this housing? And the reality is that Santa Cruz Gardens Elementary is at 50% capacity, have too much capacity. In fact, the schools could close if we don't add some housing and get some additional families in this area. So we do urgently need housing, and this is the best way forward today. So I'll be supporting the recommended actions.
Supervisor Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to actually echo the amount of work that I know that the planning team and then also the planning commission, which was a very thoughtful, I listened to a lot of the dialogue of the planning commission, that was pretty significant discussion, and I'm supportive of the movement of these few parcels out, including the one for Central Fire. It makes a lot of sense, just the timing of that. And unquestionably, Central Fire needs an opportunity to upgrade its facilities. I also do think that it'll be interesting to see, should these rezones in Batch A actually lead to fruition of construction over the next, say, 18 months, how the community maybe responds to the Batch B proposals. I think that it's one thing to kind of see it intellectually, it's another thing to actually see it in practice. And so I do anticipate that there was a comment made by an individual in regards to SoCal, one of the ones in the first district, but I think that it may be a different response come Batch B, just because it'll become more real for folks. And I know that some of the Batch B ones also are in my, some of the A and B are in my district. And so the future board will have to grapple with, with that. But with that said, I think that at the end of the day, either the board is in favor of ensuring that there's more affordable housing for this community or not, and this is an opportunity to provide the kind of, of affordable housing harmonized throughout the, throughout the county, which was always envisioned under Measure J on these transportation corridors and this infill type development, that I think that the county actually spoke for over 40 years ago by voter initiative, quite frankly, and in some respects is maybe now through some of the state actions while taking away local control, is also coming to fruition of what the county voters envisioned 40 years ago here in our own community. So it'll be, the community will look different, in particular on those corridors, just like it is in downtown Santa Cruz in the next five years than it did for the previous 40. But I think some of that transition is essential because of the lack of investments been made in affordable housing. So I'm supportive of these changes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Well, first, I'd just like to thank staff for all their work on this and bringing this forward. I mean, the only way we're going to be able to build more housing is through rezoning, and that's going to be one of the major ways that we're going to be able to, you know, take what used to be, you know, single-family neighborhoods or maybe some other form of land use designation, and by converting these to allow for more dense housing, it's going to really help us be able to provide the housing that we need for our community. I will say that one of the biggest concerns, and this isn't a critique of the planning staff at all, it's just a big concern I've had, having now been on the city council through the Rena process and now here today with this Rena process, is how we're going to get to build that very low and low affordable housing. Because as we're having this conversation, and what the experience that I've had in the past is that we oftentimes will overproduce the market rate housing, and we won't produce the very low and low, knowing that the very low and low income housing is actually what is most needed in our community. And so I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation, but I also would like to provide additional direction to have staff come back with a plan for how to meet the low and very low-income housing in our regional housing needs assessment goals and return to the board with a report no later than the first meeting in April. I think we really need to take affordable housing seriously, and I think that this, you know, the rezoning is going to help, but we really need to, you know, have a plan for how we're going to build the very low and low affordable housing. And so when the most, when there's time for motion, I'd like to add that as additional direction.
Chair, if you don't mind, could I maybe ask staff to respond to that now? And what I heard during the presentation is that the way staff is approaching making sure that we build the low and very low income affordable housing is actually by sort of oversubscribing the rezoning program, right? I mean, we identified, I can't remember the exact number, but about 930 additional units that we would need to rezone in order to meet the housing element, but we're actually rezoning closer to 2,000, for, closer to 2,000 additional units, precisely because we need more market rate units in order to ensure that the cost of building the affordable units was offset. Is that correct?
Yes, in part, it's correct, but there's more to the story, right? So the, we discussed this at the Planning Commission as well, that housing element is the plan. It has 54 different programs to help with affordable housing. And ironically, in our last Rena, it wasn't the low income we had And ironically, in our last Rena, it wasn't the low income we had such a hard time with. It was the above mod, I think, that we had a hard time with. So there's a variety of funding resources, never enough, I admit, that are available to help with low income. And so a lot of the bigger projects that we're seeing that really have the low income units that you want in, in the tune of, you know, not just two in a subdivision, but, you know, a hundred or two hundred is really what we need. We need to focus on those multifamily rezoning and, and, and projects. The, the min overlay in the housing element was also established to help with streamlining for those developments, but you have to have the twenty percent in order to do that. So there's a variety of programs here. Program H one, forget exactly which one it is, but is a nexus study to look at the affordable housing percentages and also our fees. We're just in the process of finalizing the RFP for that. So there's, there's just a ton going on to help with meeting, meeting those requirements. I'm not sure what else we would provide, but let Suzanne weigh in, our expert.
Thank you, Stephanie. I think that was a great summary. The only thing I would add was, would just be to let the board know that actually our pipeline right now is predominated by lower income subsidized units. The market dynamics right now, those are the project types that are the most feasible right now because they have access to a lot of state and federal subsidies and special financing programs. On the other hand, the economic scenario for market rate projects right now is not great. It's super challenging. And so we, you know, we have a bigger pipeline than I think I've ever seen in my time working here right now. And the majority of those are a hundred percent affordable subsidized, lower income projects. We do have some applications of various sorts. Some of them may be consultations, like preliminary application types for some market rate projects. But in terms of the projects that are sort of chomping at the bit to actually start construction and have a pretty firm financing plan going forward, those are almost all affordable housing projects. And I think at my last count, it was around eight hundred units of that nature. So I think the bigger question is how are we going to get market rate units on the ground? Because the economics for that right now are not super favorable. They may improve when interest rates come down.
So I guess where I'm coming from with this is that I appreciate this information, but I think that if we had this information in a way that could be more easily accessible to board members, members of the public, we're going to have new board members coming on. It'll be a good opportunity for us to understand how the county is approaching meeting those low income and very low income goals and by giving a one-way of, you know, April, I think that'll be a good time for, with new board members here for us to really get, you know, a comprehensive understanding of how we're going to meet those goals and what are the different types of programs we're talking about implementing. So that's the, the spirit of bringing this, this recommendation forward today.
So you're interested in a report or in an agenda item in April with the update?
Yep.
Would there be a natural time to do that in association with any other planning department work just coming forward in that timeframe?
We do have the annual progress report on the general plan housing element that we do have to bring to the board every year before April one. So I mean, that report in itself, I think, would provide a lot of the information you're requesting. But if there's some special additional material, we could include it in that report. I think that would be an efficient use of everyone's time.
Great. I'll move the recommended actions with the additional direction that for our, I think I got this right, general plan housing update in early twenty twenty, or general plan, annual progress report, thank you, update in early twenty twenty-five.
First code, comprehensive first code applicable to all departments, offices, commissions and boards in accordance with the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four. To support the change to a consolidated code, the county clerk intends to offer trainings to each department's Form seven hundred filing liaison to improve their understanding of the law, regulations and forms that are required. Staff therefore recommend you approve the recommended actions and we are happy to answer any questions. I'd also like to make sure that I thank Ruby Marquez, who helped us with this item as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll open up to the public to see if there's any members of the public here. President would like to speak to us on this item. Seeing none, are there any members of the public online who would like to speak on this item?
Chair, we have no speakers online.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments and action. I'll turn this to Supervisor Friend.
I don't have anything grand to say about this, other than I appreciate that this consolidation was done. I know it takes a lot of work and then we're just going to come up here and vote in favor of it very quickly. That's not to reflect on the amount of work that was done. I just appreciate it. And I like the streamlining in it details with all of the work that I think has been done over the last year with the streamlining of commissions and more broader work. So I appreciate your, your work on it. I'll move the recommended actions.
Second. Second, by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Koenig. Supervisor Koenig, do you have any comments to make on this item?
No, just agree that it's fantastic to consolidate these so that it's easier to update in the future and ultimately meet our legal obligations. Thank you for your work.
Supervisor McPherson, any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Hernandez. Well, again, just want to appreciate all the hard work that you all put into it. And, you know, as is reflected in how quickly we're going to be moving this item, you know, I think that we're all on board with all the work that you all have done. So thank you so much for bringing this item to our attention. With that, I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call.
Supervisor Koenig.
Hi.
Friend.
Hi.
Hernandez.
Hi.
McPherson and Cummings.
Hi. That passes unanimously. Thank you again. All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda, item number ten. This item is to approve in concept, it's related to the Health Services Agency, the subject is well and individual water system code updates. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff for presentation on this item.
Great, thank you. This is um, good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. It's nice to see everyone today. I'm Ciara Ryan. I'm the Water Resources Program Manager in the Health Services Agency Environmental Health. I'm joined today by John Ricker, former Environmental Health Water Resources Division Director and current consultant with Environmental Health, and Kevin Harmon, a resource planner with Environmental Health. I'll be presenting to you today on the updates we propose to two chapters of the code, seven point seven zero, which regulates well construction, and seven point seven three, which oversees the requirements to use a well for drinking water.
Can I pause you for a sec?
Yeah.
I noticed that Supervisor Friend's screen is apparently working, but the rest of us. Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, how's it looking up there?
They're powering up.
Okay. I'll, I'll continue my preamble here then. So regulating well construction in seven point seven three, which oversees the requirements to use a well for drinking waters as a drinking water source, which is known as an individual water system. We kicked off this process in April of twenty twenty-three and have been working closely with the county's Water Advisory Commission throughout. Today I'll be giving you a little bit of background before describing the update process and the key changes that staff is proposing. All right, so by way of background, as you all know, nearly all of the water in Santa Cruz County is locally derived, originating as rainfall from within the county. While we do have some municipal water use that relies heavily on surface water, over seventy-five percent of the water used in the county for both irrigation and drinking water comes from groundwater. Water use is roughly split between municipal suppliers and agriculture and domestic wells total about five percent of water used in the county. The county has several responsibilities already for groundwater management, which includes policies such as those before you today, issuing well permits, protecting groundwater through regulatory programs, and participating in the implementation of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. As I mentioned, the county issues well permits. Our database has records for over nine thousand wells within the county. Not all of these are drinking wells, some of these are monitoring wells. But as you can see, they are located throughout the county. Most of the gaps you see are actually within state parks properties. The geographic spread of these is why it's so critical that the county has a leading role in groundwater management. So Environmental Health issues around fifty well permits per year. Nearly eighty percent of these are for domestic users, which we consider de minimis. They typically use no more than four hundred and fifty gallons per parcel per day. We define a new well as being for a new or expanded use, for example, building a house on a previously vacant parcel. A replacement well is for an existing use where the existing well is no longer functioning and has to be destroyed. And a supplemental well is when the existing well has declining productivity or water quality issues. And an additional well is drilled to allowed for continued use of that parcel, but the original well is not destroyed and there is no expansion of water use. So as you can see, the majority of well permits are for replacement and supplemental wells. We only get an average of ten point four wells per year for new water uses and nine of those are for small domestic wells. So now we're diving into the codes that are being updated. So what exactly do they do? Chapter seven point seven zero, the chapter on water wells, provides well construction and destruction standards to protect water quality and minimize environmental impacts, basically by protecting, preventing a well from becoming a conduit for contamination from the surface down into the aquifer. It implements policies of the local, of the general plan as well as the local coastal plan. And the update will include consideration of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the protection of public trust resources. Chapter seven point seven three, the individual water system chapter, ensures adequate water is available and that water quality meets standards for homes and other uses dependent on private wells for water supply. So the two sections of the code that are being updated have not been addressed since two thousand nine and nineteen ninety-three respectively. During that time, there have been pretty significant changes at the local and state level, including the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in twenty fourteen, ongoing case law regarding SEQA and public trust resources. The county has adopted our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and our Drought Response and Outreach Plan. Senate Bill five five two looks to counties to take more responsibility for deficiencies in private domestic wells. We have a better understanding now of geologic areas that are known to have poor yield. There are new industry standards for water quality testing. The testing of existing domestic wells that we've done over the last year through our free water quality testing program has identified areas that have water quality challenges. And the state is requiring oversight of soil borings. So recognizing the limit in our staff's expertise, we enlisted the assistance of a technical advisory committee to help us address the most challenging aspects of the code. The committee's collective knowledge base has significantly enhanced the final product and garnered support from their respective communities. In addition to the TAC, we have received feedback through one-on-one and small group meetings with staff from several water districts, the groundwater sustainability agencies and the coastal commission. We've had extensive discussions with the coalition of environmental science organizations, including the Nature Conservancy, CalTrout and Trout Unlimited. And they, they did post a, a comment on the website that was very favorable. I have presented and received feedback at the Santa Margarita and Santa Cruz Mid-County Groundwater Agencies and several, presented to the Association of Realtors. I've, I've contacted the Farm Bureau several times, as well as some local organizations, and have offered to present to them. It has not happened yet, but I hope that it will. And this item has been agendized at the Water Advisory Commission eleven times for discussion between April twenty twenty-three and December of twenty twenty-four, including a comprehensive workshop that was held in August of this year. I also presented to the commission. I also presented to the Commission on the Environment in July and held a public hearing with the Planning Commission in October. There are many supporting comments on the, on the website as well, so you can take a look at those if you have a chance. So let's talk about some of the significant changes to the policy. The biggest one is that we're moving to a tiered approach to well permitting. So small domestic and replacement wells are lower tier and new large capacity wells would be a higher tier. The more extensive water quality testing will be required to develop wells and water quality and yield testing will be required at time of sale. Metering and reporting will be required on new and replacement wells that are used for non-domestic purposes. And the code relies on a resource protection policy, which we have also brought to you today, which can be updated as new information becomes available. This allows some flexibility as, as it can take a long time to update code, so it gives us a little bit more flexibility there. I will not be going through all 200 pages of the provided materials, but there are a few things I wanted to highlight for you today. So this table is in the provided materials. It outlines the tier process and specific requirements for each tier. Tiers one through three are ministerial. Tier four is discretionary. Wells that do not meet the ministerial setbacks for the lower tiers may be pushed into a higher tier. One of the biggest concerns about groundwater extraction from an environmental perspective is the flow in streams to support threatened and endangered species. This was a topic of a letter your board received from the National Marine Fisheries Service in 2022. These streams, as well as their tributaries, are considered critical and most are already impacted to some extent through existing surface and groundwater extractions. Even a relatively small extraction can potentially cause great harm to these creeks. To protect against those impacts, new water uses that fall into tier three must evaluate their anticipated stream flow depletion against our critical streams table, which is here. This was the result of significant analysis from multiple different data sources, as outlined in one of your attachments, the Critical Stream Depletion Background Document. It considers how much additional depletion may be allowed in critical streams without the need to pursue SEQA and the associated evaluations. We recognize that this information presented in this table can change as more data is collected. We have committed to continue to evaluate these resources, working with the Consortium of Wildlife Protection Groups that have helped us develop the resource protection policy. And we will be providing written updates on this process through our annual water status report that we provide to the board each year. All right. This map also provided in the materials identifies parts of the county where proposed codes point to additional review due mainly to geologic conditions that can impact water supply and water quality. I did want to point out that there was a comment this morning that referred to some exclusion zones that show up on the map. The concerns raised in that comment were addressed by SoCal Creek Water District in the comments that they provided, which are posted on the county's agenda. But in short, there are no users that are anticipated to be impacted by this, by those exclusion zones, and noticing was, significant noticing was done by the water district on those. So we included the SEQA notice of exemption in the packet. We believe that the documentation proves that this ordinance is more protective to the, to the environment than our current policy. So there are seven recommended actions provided in the memo. I've also listed them here. And that concludes my, my presentation, so we're here happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so we'll open it up to members of the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to us on this item? If so, please approach the podium, you'll have two minutes. Seeing none here in person, are there any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
You have no speakers online, Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments and action. And I'll start to my left Supervisor Hernandez. You, you mentioned that you tried to reset the Farm Bureau, but and someone in public comment earlier in the morning, public comment also asked about that. If we can make sure to reach out to them as well about this.
Yes, so I can confirm that I have emailed them on August 2nd, on August 12th, on October 1st and 2nd, and then I worked with your staff to try to arrange a presentation, but there, the group that I would be presenting to did not meet in November or December and is not going to meet again until January, so I will be presenting to them. I will point out that they have received all of the information mult, through multiple lines of email. And again, I've, I've been working with your staff to arrange a meeting, but yes, I heard that comment as well.
Monthly legislative update.
Yes, yeah, they, they canceled their November and December meetings.
Yep, Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for this. This is critical for Santa Cruz County. I'm just thinking of the, the growth in the county and we had, you know, a drought not too, well, a couple, throughout 20 years ago or so, and we responded in this county better than anybody else, and I think in the, in state of California when that was going on. And now we're getting more people and I know that 74% of our groundwater, we depend on the groundwater for 74% of our water. If we have another drought, it's, is there any way to gauge how we can do it, how, how we can handle it, or can we? Is it gonna, we have a lot more people than we did the last drought and I'm just, and there's, you know, we're still just, we don't have any state and federal water sources.
It's, it's, there's a lot of work being done monitoring groundwater levels, you know, the groundwater sustainability agencies that is their number one priority to ensure that there is sustainable groundwater supply even during drought periods. So some of the projects and management actions being done through those agencies with the support of the county and the representatives here, such as yourself on those boards, have been working towards that. Our drought response and outreach plan, which was adopted by this board in 2022, also addresses the roles the county can play, including currently we, although we're not in a drought anymore, we do have grant funding that can pay for water hauling for houses that have, are reliant on a domestic well and the domestic well goes dry due to drought. I've been working at the state, I'm on the state's drought response interagency partnership collaborative, the DRIP collaborative, I represent local government on that collaborative, and we've been working there to try to figure out more streamlined approaches that the states can offer assistance, possibly via counties for domestic wells. Because as you say, they're really, you can't just flip a switch and have a well connect to a water system or something, so trying to figure out different policies. But in short, there's added water conservation requirements for wells as part of this process and the yield testing that we require at both construction and time of sale should really help provide information to the property owners and residents who rely on a private well to help them understand if they have significant risk during drought. And the county also offers free well soundings to, to domestic well owners. So I do feel like we're doing just about everything we can, sort of making it rain.
I think those groundwater agencies came right about at the right time, huh? Thank you.
Supervisor Koenig.
Thanks, Chair. Good job with this, pretty comprehensive. My main question is regards to 7.70.090 technical standards. It says that the minimum horizontal distance between wells and potential sources of contamination shall be 100 feet. Why 100 horizontal feet? And I certainly understand the desire to separate sources of contamination and drinking water, that's a no brainer. However, I mean, well can be 100 feet, it can be 200 feet, it can be 800 feet deep. And so what's the value of the horizontal distance? I mean, that seems actually relatively arbitrary. Shouldn't we be measuring this in terms of travel time of water between the two potential sources or maybe even just sort of absolute distance?
Well, I can start by commenting that most of these standards are actually in our sewage disposal ordinance, and this is bringing our well ordinance into alliance with our sewage disposal ordinance, but I might pass it off to John Ricker if he wants to explain a little bit more about that.
Well, good to see you. The 100-foot setback is also in the state well standards. It's in the bulletin that's developed by the State Department of Water Resources. We do recognize that there may be situations, particularly with existing development, where a septic system may be less than 100 feet from a well. And we do allow a consideration of specific site conditions to evaluate whether or not that's going to be a problem. And in some cases, we would allow a replacement well to go in in that situation, provided that the seal is at least 100 feet deep, so that it, it would seal out any, any near surface contaminants. The other concern, even with, with surface issues, paddocks, animal holding facilities, there can be surface runoff that would run across the surface and then infiltrate near the wellhead. So that is one of the, the things that we're also concerned about, not just subsurface movement, but also surface movement of contaminants.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, we should, again, suggesting that maybe we should be measuring in terms of travel time rather than this arbitrary 100 feet distance. I mean, I hear it's in the state code, but if it doesn't make, if there's no logical reason for it, I prefer, you know, not to replicate mistakes, making them harder to correct.
We do look at travel time for larger wells, municipal wells, that apply for in both the county sewage ordinance and in the state policies to look at travel times and potentially look at distances, setbacks from larger municipal wells and maybe up to 600 feet if there's a, you know, a contaminant source in that area, and that does look at the travel times.
How much does a typical seal, like the one mentioned here in the code, cost to use a sanitary seal at least 100 feet deep?
The minimum requirement has been 50 feet up until now, although what we're finding in conversations with well drillers is they typically go 100, 150, 200 feet to get, to sort of seal out the upper zones where there may be more iron, more manganese, more contamin, more problematic contaminants. So it's almost standard practice now to go with deeper seals. The additional cost is really just the cost of the concrete. The whole setup and everything is, is the same, whether it's a deep, deep seal or a shallow or seal, but the exact dollar figure I, I couldn't tell you right now. But if the well drillers did not feel like that was a significant impact to go with those deeper seals.
Okay, yeah, I'm just sensitive to some of the requirements we put in place around septic systems that have doubled or tripled the cost of systems. So as long as we're not doing the same thing here, I think I can get behind it, but thanks.
Yeah. Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is good to see that John Ricker never retires. Good to see you as well, because you're here still. The only question I have is just that whether this process in particular and some of the stormwater findings, or whether this would complicate our, what I think a lot of the community would believe would be kind of an already complicated permitting process. So does this add another layer? Does it add additional timeline? Just help me understand how this would, for an average person trying to apply for something, what, what this would mean?
Yeah, so this, this whole process has really been a balancing act between trying to ensure that wells are being done properly, that they're protective of the environment, that they're protective of surrounding wells, but also recognizing that for the average person, the impact that they're likely to have is very little, and we don't want to make a more onerous process for them or for our staff who already have plenty of things to do. For the average, those, you know, 40 out of 50 wells that are replacement wells, those will continue to be quite straightforward. New domestic wells will continue to be quite straightforward. Essentially, the tier one and tier two wells are very, very similar to our current process. There will be a tiny bit of additional document review in terms of water conservation requirements, but that doesn't really add anything in terms of time or cost. The larger new developed wells, say over, over two acre feet a year, particularly if they're going to be over 50 acre feet a year, they would have a much more onerous process. However, those are not wells we see very often, and they are ones that really could have potentially significant impacts on the surrounding area. So for them, I do expect that there would be a higher cost. These are mostly water system wells that we see at this point. Water systems are already doing a SEQA analysis and a lot of additional work, so for them, it really isn't as big an additional step as say if a vacant parcel wanted to suddenly develop a large ag production that could be over, you know, over 50 acre feet a year, they would have to go through a SEQA process because it would become a discretionary permit. So there are costs there, however, for, by the large percentage of the well permits that we see, the individuals will see almost no difference in their permitting process, and we have committed to update all of our forms and procedures, and hopefully it will make the process easier and more straight, straightforward and transparent.
Okay, Ms. Ryan, appreciate it.
All right, well, I just want to thank you and appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, and in particular, the local community outreach, I think really leaning on our commissions to provide input and, you know, working with our partners in the community really helps to increase transparency and make sure that everybody's on board. And so, and then given that we don't really have many people here complaining about this item, I think that it just goes to show how much work went into it and how most people in our community are appreciative of this. So, so with that, I'll end my comments there.
I'll move the recommended actions.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor McPherson, to move the recommended actions, seeing no further questions or comments. I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So thank you all for your hard work on this.
Yep.
All right, next item. Item number 11 on our agenda is an ordinance authorizing the partial closure of Paulson Road. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Steve Weiser from CDI to provide a presentation on this item.
Hey, thank you and good afternoon, Chair Cummings and Board CEO Palacios, Steve Weisner here, Assistant Director of Public Works and Community Development Infrastructure. I'm here today to present an ordinance to your board, amending section 9.16.020 of the Santa Cruz County Code to amend, to add Paulson Road to the list of limited access thoroughfares. My presentation today, just give you a brief, brief background, the current situation and what, what we're intending to do with this ordinance. Really, in essence, it's, it's adding just one clause to this code section, and the clause reads like this. Paulson Road, a seasonal closure, the portion of Paulson Road between 195 Paulson Road and DeSico Terrace shall be closed to vehicular travel at times when passage is deemed unsafe by the Director of Community Development Infrastructure, to be reopened when the hazardous conditions have alleviated sufficiently to allow safe vehicular travel. Do you? Think so. Thank you. If you go to the next slide, that'd be great. So just a brief background, Paulson Road, thank you. As, as we presented previously to your board, Paulson Road actually closes seasonally now. There's flooding that occurs just about every winter on an average winter's rainfall. And we've, we go out there, we do temporary closures, but there are folks getting, you know, and you can see in some of these photos, getting around the closures and driving through some of the flooded area. And these are pictures of just this last winter when Paulson again flooded. And you can see that the road edge is starting to experience damage through oversaturation and then also just cars driving through there and really starting to pop potholes in a lot of the pavement in the area. Now fortunately, it was closed for a few months this past winter, but when we do have vehicular travel, traffic passing through there and the weight of the vehicles along with the water in the roadway tends to cause a lot of damage. I think we spent just a little over $20,000 this year repairing Paulson Road to reopen it in June. And so just a brief history, I presented this to your board before. This is, so back when we think the private levees were built along Green Valley Creek, north of Paulson Road, for, you know, reclamation purposes to start to, to start to plant and agricultural practices on the fields adjacent to the creek there. Within like the first 10 years, we can see there was an abulsion of those private levees. 10 years, we can see there was an abulsion of those private levees. And that's in the 1956 aerial photo that you see to the left of the creek north of Paulson Road. It had evolved there and then ran through the fields there. And certainly, I'm sure the farmers went back there and rebuilt the levees and got the water back into the creek. But I'm certain Paulson Road was flooding back then at that time. And then fast forward today, and this has happened many, many times throughout the decades, we believe. In 23, in 2017, we had a fairly large evulsion on the right bank looking upstream. And then in 23, we had two more of that private levy system. And of course, we've encouraged the the private landowners and the farmers to do as much as they can to manage the water. But the problem is the environmental rules associated with this creek in particular has made it very difficult for them to obtain permits to do those levy repairs. And so you can see in 2023, this is the way it sits today. We've got three major breaches in the private levy system above Paulson Road, which basically will continue to flood Paulson Road on normal rain events. So hence why we're bringing this ordinance change for you to allow the Director of CDI to close this seasonally. You know, you probably put gates up, but it might start, you know, with the first couple of years with just K rail and some concrete barriers. But it's really to keep people safe and to keep the road from being destroyed during the flooding season. The location, you can see, it doesn't include any driveways. And we'll work with some of the private property owners out there so that they can still gain access to their properties. But you can see there the western portion at Paulson, 195 Paulson, and then the eastern portion there at DeCicco Terrace. Now, we have contemplated and presented to your board previously what permanent repair would be here, a solution to alleviate the flooding short of the private landowners doing work on their own levy system. We really think a road raise is what's in order here with some associated drainage infrastructure. Three to five feet, we think really gets us up and out of the floodplain, and then the road can be serviceable for the entire year. But we estimate that that project's going to cost upwards of $3 million and probably more. And so what we're recommending today is to approve in concept an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Cruz amending section nine dot 16 dot O two O of the Santa Cruz County Code to add Paulson Road to the list of limited access thoroughfares, and to direct the clerk of the board to schedule the ordinance for a second reading and final adoption on December 17, 2024. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I'll open up to the public to see if there's any member of the public would like to speak to us on this item. If so, please approach the podium. You'll have two minutes. Seeing none, we'll go online to see if there's any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item.
We have no speakers online, Chair.
All right, well, that'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments, and action. I'll start with Supervisor Hernandez.
So I wanted to find out what's the difference between what we have now and actually putting it on a ordinance to place on the list for limited access thoroughfare?
So I think that what we have now is the Public Works Director, the Director of CDI does have the ability to implement emergency closures up there. It's just at this point, we're seeing this such a regular pattern of flooding on a seasonal basis that we really believe that that your board should be aware that it is going to be closed seasonally and that we should implement, you know, sort of codify this into the Santa Cruz County Code as such.
Does it limit or hinder in any way to any future plans to do the permanent fix you're talking about?
Not at all. No, once we do the permanent fix, we could easily just remove this from the code.
Okay, because, you know, I'd like to see this as the same priority as Mount Charlie. You know, that the closures, they really impact traffic on both Green Valley Road, Olahan, East Lake, and Casserly. Big tremendous traffic impacts through those roads because it limits access to three, is it two or three charter schools out there that people go to? You know, I, I'd like to see that solution. The next time this comes up again on Paulson Road, I'd like to see more planning and scoping plans that we might have in the future. And it's.
My response is that yes, it is an inconvenience to the folks out there. We do understand that the detour length to the schools especially is really inconvenient for folks who live out there. Our main thing is we want to keep folks safe. And we've heard year after year after year from CDF and the some of the emergency personnel down there that have to respond to folks who are stranded out in the water. And it's, you know, we've done our best to make these soft closures over the past decade. But since we're seeing this on such a seasonal basis, we want to, we want to formalize this so that we can make the closure more formal and really do our best to keep vehicular traffic out of that area. So people don't get hurt and the road doesn't get destroyed. So we can reopen it much faster once the water alleviates. But we certainly are looking for funding to solve this problem. We think the more permanent problem, more permanent solution is going to be to raise the road. We've been working with the local landowners out there and also encourage them as much as possible to rebuild their levees. But short of that, I think we're going to be living in this situation for a little while now.
Okay.
Supervisor McPherson.
Where do you see the funding coming from this? You, we have the local roads and the RTC percentage is a high, the highest percentage, or just our county budget itself. How do you see this financed? Do you, is it guesswork at this point? Or what are there options? Or how many options are available?
Well, we don't see any options in the regular financing streams that we currently receive for road maintenance. And we do think some new funding source has to come forward to do something like this. And so whether that is a grant program with some type of matching funds from the county or something like that is probably what we're looking at.
I would also, if I could, add that the passage of Measure Q, was it? Yes. Measure Q offers in the future, the possibility of doing some wetland restoration and some restoration of that stream bed in conjunction with the repair of the road. So that's another source of a bigger solution to this, because a lot of it is because of the creek, right? And the fact it's been channeled. And so if there's a possibility of combining our efforts with Measure Q and the Land Trust and the Conservation District.
Conservation District.
Could be a bigger permanent solution and the farmers as well. That's what it's going to take to do this project.
And PBWMA as well, right? Because they own the property that used to be College Lake, that area.
But would there be any seed money like SB one money available for that?
You know, at this time, we're not seeing that. There's a lot of pressure on SB one right now as it is for for many years to come, given all of the storm response from 2023. But I do like the CAO's idea of looking at some habitat restoration funding opportunities, whether that's Measure Q or some other type of opportunities that might come forward through FEMA or some other hazardous mitigation program.
Supervisor Friend. I, this is one of those situations where in each of our districts, we actually have roads that are like this. I mean, I walked into a situation where I've got a road that was closed due to a geologic slide that we ended up permanently closing. That kind of straddles the second and fourth district. At the end of the day, there really isn't a lot of options here. So this is just, I mean, I guarantee you that a roads director doesn't want to close a road. That's not why he grew up saying he wanted to be a roads director, which I'm sure this is exactly what you wanted to do when you were a kid, Steve. But at the end of the day, what what we're going to need to do is come up with a multi-pronged funding mechanism for roads like this. And these are very difficult roads to get funded for a lot of reasons. There isn't enough access to justify it. There isn't specifically disadvantaged community within that census tract that allows for different kinds of funding. There's a lot of elements here that make it harder to get the funding. And in regards to Mount Charlie, which was not a permanent opening, I mean, Supervisor McPherson dedicated his Measure D money toward that, as opposed to other roads that would go in his district, which, you know, I suppose is a multi-year opportunity for you to, Supervisor Hernandez, should that be something you want to do? So we have our opportunities, whether it's Q, K, or D, to dedicate some funds to this. But this is going to be a, you know, multimillion dollar, multi-pronged process. And we, and that's just an expectation that we need to let people know. But we also can't have a situation like we've had on Beach Road and other locations that need to be raised where we've got people trying to pass, and we've got our public safety partners out there just saving lives as a result of people doing that. So I'm supportive of this. It's an unfortunate situation, but I'm confident in the public works team trying to find a long-term solution.
Supervisor Koenig. Okay. All right. Well, I just want to thank you all for your hard work. It's a tough decision. But it seems like given the frequency of how we're seeing these roads needing to be closed year after year, this just makes sense. And in fully, I'm also fully supportive of us, you know, trying to continue to work on getting funding and working towards a more permanent solution. But as it stands right now, this seems like something that's necessary for us to move forward. So with that, I'll end my comments, and then I'll ask for a motion on this item from a member of the board. So, okay, so motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Friend to move the staff recommendation. I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay, so we have, do we want to get an introduction to the next item, then we'll take a break at 1:30?
Get through 12. I can get through 12.
Okay, let's see if we can just get through this next item real quick. So next item, item number 12, consider approving in concept an ordinance amending chapter 2.74 of the Santa Cruz County Code related to the Planning Commission, approve proposed provisions to the Planning Commission bylaws, take related actions. I'll turn to staff for a presentation on this item.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheila McDaniel with the, I'm the principal planner for the Development Review Section of CDI and Secretary to the Planning Commission. So the county and commission staff identified a need to update the Planning Commission ordinance and the Planning Commission's bylaws to align with the recent updates in the Santa Cruz County Code, Chapter 2.38, known as the Commission's Policy Ordinance of Santa Cruz County and the Brown Act. And as you're all aware, this is one of many steps as part of the Boards and Commissions Streamlining Program initiated by the Clerk of the Board and County Council intended to improve function of the county commissions. Based on guidance from the County Administrative Office and County Council, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the revised Planning Commission bylaws at the regular meeting on September 24, 2024. And as you're aware, the bylaws clarify the responsibilities of the Planning Commission and format of hearings in alignment with Section 2.38 and the Brown Act. The revised bylaws are reflected in the attached amendments to Chapter 2.74, as that's the Planning Commission ordinance. The most significant revision to Chapter 2.74 is the Planning Commission Members' Term of Office to coincide with April 1 appointment of Commission members by their elected board member, as enumerated in Santa Cruz County Code 2.38, without much, without which the Commission would not have a quorum in January. So this ordinance revision would allow PC members that would otherwise term out, if you will, at the end of December of the board members' term to continue to serve on the Commission, and allow newly elected board members enough time to appoint their respective Commission members. This has been the longstanding practice to allow Planning Commission members to continue on without any action by the board. So to be clear, District Two and District Five Planning Commission seats would thus continue on following the effective date of the ordinance in January. So that streamlines that. And then as well, minor changes reflect changes in merger of the Planning Department and Public Works to CDI. And with regard to the bylaws, the clean copy of the bylaws reflects the Planning Commission recommendation to your board, with one departure where the county council recommends removal of one Planning Commission approved change noted in strikeout item 14.3, concerning conflict of conflicts of interest that is arguably inconsistent with earlier section in the bylaws that directs compliance with the state law. And then I won't go into the content of bylaws, but the bylaws essentially act as a crib sheet to the Planning Commission. So we welcome your approval of those bylaws. And so pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 21065A, the ordinance and bylaws do not qualify as a project as defined under Section 15378A1 of the SEQA. Therefore, no additional SEQA analysis required for the ordinance and bylaws amendments. So staff's recommendation is to consider approval in concept of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.74 of the Commission of the County Code related to the Planning Commission. That it scheduled the ordinance for second reading and final adoption on December 17, 2024, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a notice of proposed ordinance summary in a newspaper of general circulation at least five days prior to the scheduled second reading and final adoption, no later than December 12 pursuant to the Government Code, Section 25124. And lastly, approve the proposed Planning Commission bylaws as recommended by County Council and reflected in the clean copy attached. And lastly, I just wanted to extend appreciation to County Council and the Clerk of the Board in your support regarding commissions, or a lot goes on behind the scenes. And we really, I really appreciate all the work that you've done to support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? So please approach the podium. You'll have two minutes. Seeing none, are there any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
We have no speakers on the chair.
Okay, with that, I'll pull it back to the board for action and motion.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Koenig. Any other questions or comments on this item from other board members?
Well, I just think it's very, you know, it's procedural, it's updating our our bylaws, and it streamlines the process. So.
Any other comments? Saying none, just want to appreciate all the work that was done to bring us these updates. I want to thank County Council for their work on this as well. And with that, yeah, we have a motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Koenig, if we can have the clerk call the roll call vote.
Certainly. Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson. And.
Aye, that passes unanimously. All right, we have a couple of minutes, but yeah, so we're going to go ahead and get started with our next item, which is a time certain scheduled item, 1:30, to consider authorizing the issuance of a proclamation honoring Sheriff Jim Hart on his retirement to be signed by all members of the board. And, and so we'll move on to that item. And I just want to invite up Chris Clark. The way we'll do this is we'll have Chris Clark lead us on the comments on this item, followed by we'll open up to members of the public to have two minutes to share their comments on the retirement of the sheriff. We'll then come back to the board and we'll read the proclamation. So go ahead.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Cummings.
If you can point the mic to it.
Got it. Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, CAO Carlos Palacios. My name is Chris Clark, Sheriff Coroner. And it's in my honor to introduce this, this next item and this proclamation honoring Jim Hart for his 36 years of service. I can tell you that some may wonder whether or not they've made a difference in the 36 years or just within their lifetime when it comes to people's lives and, and in communities in large, in general, here at the, within Santa Cruz County. And I'm going to talk about a number of different accomplishments that, that Sheriff Hart has done over his, over his 10 years as sheriff. And I want to touch on three things. One is our 21st Century Policing, our DNA lab, and then finally, our Sobering Center. 21st Century Policing really took the forethought of Jim Hart to look forward and, and find ways of being able to deliver better policing services here within Santa Cruz County, well ahead of reform measures that found many other police agencies. That was not our, that was not, that didn't happen to us, thanks to Sheriff Hart. Our DNA lab, as your boards aware, it can take upwards of a year to get DNA evidence back, which is really a detriment to when it comes to justice for survivors. Sheriff Hart carved away space at our, at our headquarters building for the future development of a DNA lab, for which I'm proud to say that Sheriff Hart completed that, that, that construction. And then we began the hiring process, and we've hired two folks to make that lab happen so that we can turn around DNA evidence within 24 to 48 hours when it comes to survivors and victims of violent crime in this county, which is, which is frankly unheard of within, within the state of California. And then finally, our Sobering Center. When it comes to folks who, when it comes to public intoxication, first time DUI, and under the influence, Sheriff Hart 10 years ago looked at that from a public health related problem, and not from a criminal related issue to hopefully get people directly connected to services to prevent that, that incarceration, to help get them help. And so really with those three things, what it, what it really showed me, and what I think it taught our office and really showed the public in general, were four things. One is you got to have a clear, you got to have a clear vision. Sheriff Hart had that. You have to commit. Sheriff Hart, you know, he set out those goals, and he, and he committed to making sure that we, that we completed them. You have to persevere through. There were some challenges when it came to 21st Century Policing and some things that, that were just difficult to kind of work through. And that came with the DNA lab as well. When it came to funding that lab, Sheriff Hart found a way to do that with net, no net county cost to folks here in the county. And then, and then with our Sobering Center, that took courage to see all of that through. When it came to educating police agencies and making sure that that first, that, that arrest for somebody under the influence or drunk in public went to the Sobering Center instead of our jail so that they could get help, that took, that took courage, and it, and it took a lot of strength. So having a clear vision, commitment, perseverance, and courage to make sure these projects move through, that is at the core of Sheriff Hart's leadership. That is, that's what I've taken away by my years of working for him, and is with my honor to be able to celebrate and with all, every bit of the gratitude from our sheriff's office to congratulate Sheriff Hart on 36 years of an amazing career. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'll open it up to members of the public. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium. So with that, I'll open it up to members of the public. If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item, please approach the podium. You'll have two minutes. Saying none here in person, if there's any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item.
We have no speakers on line chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Um, and I'll maybe start with some of my more senior colleagues on the board, um, Supervisor McPherson. Sorry, figuratively.
The truth hurts, you know. Now, I, I can't, uh, think of a, a better gentleman, uh, somebody visionary and just a tremendous community leader, a leader who cares about Santa Cruz County than Jim Hart, the sheriff. There, there was a couple of things and we'll probably be repeating these, the, uh, the three main things of the DNA, uh, lab, the Twenty First Century Policing, the Sobering Center, and how you've coordinated efforts, uh, law enforcement efforts with the other police agencies in our four cities. And even the fire systems get, um, in, involved in that sometimes too. And, uh, everybody feels together. They feel like a family. I know your sheriff's office really feels like that, but you've made everybody in the public safety area in Santa Cruz County feel, hey, we're together in this and let's solve it. And it never came more evident, uh, than the CZU fire when, and I think it was, uh, now Sheriff Clark, um, really, uh, oversaw under the direction of Sheriff, then Sheriff, uh, Hart, um, to evacuate thousands of people in the CZU fire. And as I said, there's not, not one fender was bent in that whole process. And it was just well coordinated, really smart. That's the way to do it. Um, it, you don't have vision in that. You said, and he does have a good vision about how to, how to look ahead of what, what is needed. But when a crisis comes, um, he, he reacts and he reacts with leadership. And it's the same thing with when, God bless, uh, Sherman, uh, uh, your, uh, leader, Sergeant Damon Gutzweiler, when, when that happened. How to keep your act together is really something. And for, uh, a supervisor that represents the fifth district, the Felton Station, substation is, was put in place. We now have one in Boulder Creek. I can't tell you the comfort that that adds to the people in the Santa Rosa Valley to have those two substations up there. And it's because of the leadership of Jim Hart. Um, I can go on and on, but, and they're going to say, the, my, the other supervisors are going to say much of the same, but Jim Hart, uh, in, in a phrase is a class act. And I really appreciate him and his profession and I appreciate him as a friend. Thank you, Jim.
Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, quite frankly, for the last decade that Sheriff Hart has been sheriff, we've really witnessed greatness in our community and, and the example of how law enforcement leadership is supposed to be modeled with both internal and external partners, where the culture of the sheriff's office has really become the envy of all law enforcement cultures in the county unquestionably. And the relationship with the community unquestionably has grown stronger and stronger. On a personal note, um, there are times in law enforcement where you're basically asked to walk straight up to the gates of hell. And with Sheriff Hart, in my previous life and this current iteration, we've been through some situations together with the loss of two officers in Santa Cruz PD, where one of the very first calls I received was from Jim asking how he could support the agencies, the families and me personally. And then with Damon, and to see the true character of a person come through at the worst times, the amount of compassion for others during a time when he's grieving and still having the capacity to love the community, to reach out to the community and to reach out to others. Um, it's a testament of somebody who's bigger than the badge, of somebody who understands how to have this broader relationship with others. So Sheriff Hart, it's, it's a loss for you leaving the community in this space, but to Sheriff Chris Clark's point, there is no question to answer the question that you asked Jackie of have you done enough? You've done more than what the definition of enough would ever be. You have given yourself this community in a way that is admirable with an ethical approach. You've modeled it. And as a father, as we talked about the other day, you've modeled that as well. Never missing a game, doing everything you can for Noah, as I had mentioned to you personally, showing up at my house within a week of my son being born to, um, offer your love and support. This is the type of character that we've had for thirty six years serving this community. And, uh, I admire you personally and professionally and look up to you personally and professionally. And I'm glad that we, in a small way, can honor you on the Board of Supervisors and to recognize how uncommon this is, you know, to have that amount of respect from an elected board, but it is extreme and real. And I want you to feel that today. I know that, that if you could literally be anywhere else, you would. But you're here and they gave me unlimited microphone time. Um, and I'm almost out too. So, you know, I guess we get to go out together, but, um, I just wanted you to know, uh, and this community to know more broadly about what you've done and give a little bit of behind the scenes about the person that you maybe see on TV or you maybe read in the newspaper every once in a while, but he's much more than that. Um, and I think that you've modeled that for this community and, and we are so fortunate that you helped develop this next leader who's sitting behind you, who is going to not just take what you've done, but take it to the next level and a whole generation of leaders sitting behind that. I mean, this is, this is a pretty stellar opportunity in, in law enforcement agency. I mean, a national model and Jim, a lot of it's due to you. So, um, I love you and respect you and congratulations on your retirement. I'm never going to play golf with you because I suck. And the last time I did, you made fun of me for it. But you can play with Bruce, uh, and, and, uh, other than that, Noah, you've got a great dad. Look up to him and listen to him because this is somebody that a lot of us admire. Thank you, Jim.
Supervisor Koenig.
Well, Sheriff Hart, Jim, um, you know, I took office in twenty twenty one, coming, coming on the tail end of a very, um, challenging year in twenty twenty. Um, you know, CZU fires, COVID, um, you know, and of course the Black Lives Matter movement. And I think one of the things that surprised me the most upon taking office was just how little there actually was to do, uh, as far as reform for law enforcement in our community, because you had already done it all. And that's what we're really talking about with your Twenty First Century Policing approach, with the fact that our deputies are integrated members of our community through all of the programs, um, that are, are integral to this department, not, not least of which, of course, is trunk or treat. Um, I think maybe the best place to get candy in the whole county come Halloween. Um, but really, all of our deputies approach their role in this community, uh, with compassion um, and viewing every community member equally. And that's thanks to you and the leadership that you've provided from the top. Uh, I mean, whether it's just your responsiveness to, uh, the safety in our schools or at Live Oak Beaches or, um, really leaning in to helping to create a Summit Substation, which looking forward to getting open next year. Um, you've also been just so transparent, um, as far as, uh, taking on and, uh, the, uh, supporting the creation of the Office of the Inspector General. You know, most people would hate to have someone looking over their shoulder and providing additional feedback, um, pointing out the things that you missed, but, um, thanks to your leadership, your office has really embraced that as a, as an opportunity to improve yet further. Uh, and I, again, I think that's a really healthy relationship that does not exist in every community by, by, uh, by far. And of course, you've also really set us on a good path towards addressing the fentanyl overdose crisis as well. Um, and looking forward to making some, some strides in that area as well. So, um, again, I think we have, uh, so much to be thankful for from your thirty six years of service. You've set our county up uh, for success. Um, and really excited about the, the leadership that Sheriff Clark is going to provide. Uh, thanks to all his time working with you and seeing how it's done.
Uh, Supervisor Hernandez.
So I've had the opportunity to work with, uh, Sheriff Hart several times and Sheriff Hart really showed, um, his leadership, especially during the storms. I wasn't there for other things, but during the storms, um, everything from, you know, notifying the sheriff, all the sheriffs, you know, out there notifying residents, um, about the emergency, uh, in the inner Lakin area and from placing, making sure that we place Spanish social media to alert the community out there in South County. So I'm really, uh, admire the leadership and vision that he has. You know, when people, I talk to people, uh, from different areas, right? And one of the things that they recognize is that people see our sheriffs as leaders when it comes to community policing. I mean, we've had the opportunity to have several community meetings in the district and, you know, that's something that you don't see all the time. Um, but I believe all of this is because of Sheriff Hart's, uh, vision, his leadership, and even the foresight to develop leadership to, to replace himself. Um, and it was a stellar decision as well. Um, as someone said, um, Sheriff Chris Clark is going to have big shoes to fill. So thank you for all your work.
Um, I, it's, it's hard to know where to begin, uh, with making comments, but, um, you know, for me, it's, it's, it's really sad to see you go, Jim. Um, you know, when I moved here, I, I originally lived in, I was raised in Chicago and, you know, shootings and homicides are almost on a daily basis there. And so to move into a community, and I'd also should say that the, the relationship between people and the law enforcement isn't always the greatest there as well. And to move into a community where you may have like one shooting a year and where you don't see, you know, gang violence rampant throughout the community, that's really truly a reflection of the amount of work and hard effort that's put into trying to make this community safe. And I think when people think about, you know, moving to Santa Cruz and yes, it's beautiful and all that, but it's also an extremely safe community in many ways. And I think that that is a reflection of your leadership and your officers and their ability to really try to, you know, make that a priority. And so I just want to thank you, you know, for all the work that you've done, especially around Twenty First Century Policing as well, because during COVID, um, when I was mayor, working with the many offices, but in particular your office, I remember when people were demanding, um, you know, the eight can't wait and all these other different programs and meeting with you and, you know, learning that, you know, we already were doing these things. And, you know, that was, and, and, and I also want to thank you for your willingness to be open to us having a regional discussion to compare our policies, because I think one of the things that was interesting for me was that we have these things in place, but people don't know about it. So how do we, you know, educate folks on the good work that we're doing so they're not just focusing on the bad things? And, and as a result, we were really able to, you know, pull all those policies together. And when there were opportunities for improvements, you were more than willing to, to make those improvements. And so, um, I just want to thank you for your, um, for your foresight and for your willingness to be, you know, open to, um, you know, trying new things when others might not want to do that. And then, um, and then I just also want to, um, really, because I know that folks have touched on a lot of different topics, but in particular COVID, um, I just really want to thank you for everything that you were able to do around that. I mean, we've seen other communities where COVID was running rampant through the jails, um, but you made it a priority to try to reduce as much as possible. And as a result, you know, we had very few cases in the jails and it's really a reflection of, of your willingness to step up to challenges, try to think outside the box to really make sure that we can be effective in the work that we do. And so, um, while we're sad to see you go, I'm really looking forward to working with Sheriff Clark and the many, um, officers in your department. Um, I've always found their level of professionalism to be, to exceed, um, what, um, other folks may see in other communities. And we just want to continue to see that moving forward. And so, um, for all the work that you've done, I just want to thank you for putting our department and our community in the safest place possible. And so, um.
And Mr. Chair, I will move the proclamation.
Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor McPherson, um, all those, I'll turn to the clerk for roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig. Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Absolutely, aye.
McPherson. And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Before we move on to the sheriff's comments, I'd also like to see if, um, um, Jason Heath or Carlos Placios, if you all had any comments you'd like to make.
Yeah, if I could, I, I really appreciate, um, Jim, the years that we worked together, uh, was, uh, highlighted my career to work with you and your department. Uh, I really appreciate more than anything, um, the professionalism and the high ethical standards that you bring to your department and that your department represents. It's truly, uh, something that I very much appreciate and the positive working relationship that we have had uh, together in our office. And Sheriff Hart mentioned the other day at, at his reception that what we have in this county is actually very rare, uh, that the CAO's office and the sheriff's department have worked so positively together and, uh, and that the board has such a positive relationship with the sheriff and has been so, so supportive of the sheriff as well. And our health department, our human services department, our probation department, our district attorney, uh, our public defender, all of us have worked as a team. And that is incredibly rare across the state. And every time I go to one of our county conferences and I hear about CAOs who don't even have, who don't even talk to their sheriff, um, boards of supervisors who don't even talk to their sheriff. And here we have such a positive relationship in which we are all working together on the community issues and helping to make the community better. And I think that, uh, represents you and your ability to compromise, work with us, be a strong advocate for your department, but also be willing to work with all of us in terms of all the priorities that we're having to face as a county. So I do appreciate you and I appreciate the way that you brought your department into today. So thank you so much for the relationship.
Thank you, Carlos.
Can't really add to all of the accolades that you've already got over, over the course of time here, but I, I do want to repeat something and, and that is thirty six years, thirty six years, you've been running around this county and running around this community, trying to make life better and make this community safer. And it, it's just been my privilege. And, and when I retire, it's one of the things that I'm going to look back on is my close relationship with you and your office and your team, um, over these many years. Um, this has been very meaningful and I'm just really, really grateful for you and for your public service and for your commitment to our county and just wish you the very, very best in your, in your next chapter.
Very kind. Thank you. All right. And before I turn it over to you, um, just like to read the proclamation, honoring Sheriff Corner Jim Hart on the occasion of his retirement. Where Sheriff Jim Hart was elected Sheriff Corner in twenty fourteen, empowered by this California State Constitution, to serve as the chief law enforcement officer for, for the county of Santa Cruz and has served honorably for three consecutive terms in office as a stalwart leader in ensuring the safety and well-being of county residents. And where Sheriff Hart has dedicated thirty six years to the sheriff's office and has shaped his career by performing every level of law enforcement role, incorporating knowledge gained from working earnestly and collectively with others and by advancing trailblazing transformational changes of law enforcement ideology and practices in Santa Cruz County to better serve and protect the diverse communities in our region. Whereas in twenty sixteen, within two years of serving as sheriff, sheriff's office was recognized for being among the first law enforcement agencies in California to adopt President Obama's Twenty First Century Policing Model. And Senator Dianne Feinstein expressed, I strongly believe that your efforts will set an example for other law enforcement agencies throughout this great state. And it was these efforts that led to Sheriff Hart being awarded the twenty eighteen James Q Award of Excellence in Community Policing. And where Sheriff Hart's other notable achievements include establishing the county's recovery center, which provides an alternative to incarceration for individuals arrested for substance use, helping them receive appropriate recovery services while reducing the jail population, opening the Roundtree Rehabilitation and Reentry Facility designated to reduce recidivism through services and programs and establishing a state-of-the-art forensic DNA lab to advance accountability to conduct in-house DNA analysis and expedite casework. And where Sheriff Hart courageously led the department through numerous unprecedented environmental and public health challenges, including seven federally declared disasters, the CZU Lightning Fire Complex, COVID nineteen pandemic and the fentanyl crisis, consistently exemplifying his resolute devotion to public service and safety of the people of Santa Cruz County. And where Sheriff Hart exemplified compassionate leadership during one of the department's darkest moment, the tragic line of duty death of Sergeant Damon Gutzweiler in two thousand. And during this tragic time, Sheriff, Sheriff Hart stood with the department, the community and Gutzweiler's family, ensuring that Sergeant Gutzweiler's legacy of bravery and service would be honored. And where Sheriff Hart led the effort to establish the Santa Cruz County Office of Inspector General in twenty twenty two, serving as an independent oversight body for the sheriff's office among only a few fifty counties to do so. And he, and he was commended by the Office of Inspector General for his leadership and commitment to the highest level of transparency in the sheriff's office policies and practices. And whereas after demonstrating unwavering commitment to this community, achieving numerous and notable career milestones and implementing recognized community-oriented policing practices that have kept crime rates low, Sheriff Hart will retire. that have kept crime rates low, Sheriff Hart will retire on December sixth, twenty twenty-four, spend time with his supportive family and continue enjoying the community he devoted service for nearly four decades. Now, therefore, the members of the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors extend their deepest gratitude and commendation to Sheriff Hart for his thirty-six years of dedicated service, leadership, and tireless commitment to justice, safety, and the well-being of the people of Santa Cruz County.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
And before every great man, there's a better woman, Jackie. No, you're right there for sure. Yeah, far, far better than me. So yeah, but uh, you know, I I love this job. This, being a sheriff is a pretty cool job. And I'm gonna miss it. Already miss it. And but, you know, Chris, he's he's doing a great job. He's he's gonna be a great sheriff. So, you know, I I I know that we're not gonna miss a beat with Chris, but I I love that flipping job, man. That's a good job. Ah, anyway, um, I just, you know, I I I really wanna, I I appreciate the relationship that we've had. You know, all the board members. I mean, we we talk all the time, right? Something happens in your district, like via call or something's going on, we talk and you guys, you guys have been so supportive of public safety and law enforcement. I just, you know, Zach and Bruce, I mean, this county is gonna miss you guys a lot, man. I mean, you, you have been fantastic supervisors and just a wonder to work with. You know, I I I walked uh precincts for you, Bruce, back in two thousand, was it twelve? I think it was, two thousand twelve or somewhere there. And uh, I mean, I, you know, we we are so lucky to have a a man like you on our board and then and then Zach, I mean, just, oh, you know, amazing. So thank you so much. And and then Carlos, you know, not a lot of sheriffs say this, but um, I appreciate you. I mean, you are a good C O. You're really good. And I wrote you a letter and I said, you are exemplary. And you are, you 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 have done amazing work. And um, I always felt like uh, between the board and you and your staff and Nicole and Melody, um, we got what we needed, but not everything we wanted, right? But but we always got what we needed. And uh, you, you made that happen. So, you know, thank you so much. I I, you know, you, you have been um, I, and I I bet you less than ten sheriffs will ever say this, you know, of the fifty-eight sheriffs, but you have been a great partner, you know, really, and and helped us uh, move forward at the sheriff's office. So thank you so much. And then Jason Heath, you and your team, I mean, wow, you know, the, you just, you just look at the amount of litigation that we go through. Uh, some of it's frivolous, some of it's not, but you and your team, this, uh, you do a fantastic job, Jason, and you are a wonderful county council and um, you know, what what I love about me, you, Carlos, Jeff, Fernando, all the chiefs is, is we can disagree and then go have a cup of coffee and be okay, right? We we are okay, you know, and and we uh, we have that friendship and um, and and today's politics, it's like if you don't agree that you're somehow enemies, but that we were never, Carlos, we were never enemies. None of the board members, right? Just, okay, if something couldn't work out the way I want it to work out, so we'll, we'll figure it out, right? And and that's rare now. It is really rare, but I I appreciate you, Jason, and you, you have taken care of our people a lot. So so thank you so much. And and then uh, especially my wife, Jackie, uh, and Noah, Sam, Ellie, Nadine, you know, you guys have, you've you've seen sort of the ugly side of it. And uh, you know, there's, there's hard days in this job, hard days. And uh, man, you guys always have my back, you know? Um, I just, I I could not have have made it through the way I did without you guys. So thank you so much. I love you. My parents, you know, I I'm so fortunate. I'm I'm almost sixty years old and my parents are are still sitting here, you know? I'm I'm really lucky, you know, I'm I'm very fortunate. And uh, and thank you for for everything you guys have done. I I remember getting, the day I got hired, you guys were right there. The day I'm retiring, you're, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's amazing. And uh, I'm very lucky to have you in our, in our lives. So thank you so much. And then I I really want to recognize Kathy. Kathy, you, you and I have been, you know, you, you, you call yourself uh, my work wife and you kind of are. I mean, we, yeah, we, we get through it and you, you have just done amazing uh work for the sheriff's office. And a lot of the deputies have no idea. Chris does, you know, uh, Carlos and Melody and and Nicole do, but a lot of deputies don't. But you, you have done incredible work. So thank you so much for for thirty years, you know, of your life, you and Charlie. So thank you. And and then uh, you know, I I don't, I don't even call her my assistant, my friend, Delissa, you know, just, Delissa is uh, she kind of shuffles me around, okay, you need to go over here and now. And, you know, she, she makes sure I'm at every meeting and and uh, I I feel like you're, you're the same age as Samantha, my oldest daughter. And I I just feel like that you're one of my kids, you know, and uh, you, you have done amazing uh work for me, Delissa. So thank you so much. I, hey, I think the world of you. I'll do anything. And then uh, to my staff, I just, I, you know, my, 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 our deputies, sergeants, lieutenants, chiefs, um, it's been my, I mean, my greatest honor to to be your sheriff and um, you, our people are just amazed. I mean, we cannot do this job without the people. We can't do it. And to have three hundred and sixty-five really solid people doing this job is amazing. And I I appreciate you all. I love you all. Uh, and just thank you for supporting me. I mean, I, I I couldn't do it if it wasn't for you. And so thank you so much. And and uh, you know, Chris is gonna be a great sheriff, Chris. I I I have nothing but but faith in you and and you're gonna take our office to the next level. And I have no doubt about that. So I've always supported you and I think I've promoted you four times now. I think, you know, so I, obviously I believe in you. And uh, you, you're, you're gonna do amazing things, you and your kid and the team. So anyway, I know I'm babbling, but thank you all so much for being here. And board, thank you so much. Carlos, Jason. Everybody, thank you so much. And uh, you know, I I I didn't, I wasn't like super excited about doing this. I I love this job and I love serving this county and and uh, here we are. But um, you know, Manu, Justin and Felipe, you guys are, you, you have the opportunity to uh have another few, few years or more. And uh, what a blessing. I mean, what a blessing that you guys get to, you get to help this community out, right? And and then Zach and Bruce, so we, we've just been so fortunate to have you here. So thank you so much. And and best of luck on your next adventures as as well. So appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Sheriff, if you don't mind, I think the board would like to get a picture with you before you go.
Yeah, Sheriff Hart will be right here holding the, holding the uh proclamation.
Right. My photo of my husband is Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Once again, all right.
Thank you. It's funny like that.
They're giving them so amazing for us and
Hey, you know, let's just just get this done.
We can run this thing. We've been doing it forever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It lights down. You gotta, you gotta own the position. Yeah, this one's on. All right, thanks Supervisor Koenig and Hernandez are on their way right behind us. So we'll go ahead and um get started on the next item, which is item number thirteen. Consider approving Phase Two Transition Plan, which entails transitioning Recovery Permit Center Services from Fourleaf Incorporated Consulting to County Staff and take related actions. And um, I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation on this item.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and members of the board. Jocelyn Drake, CDI Unified Permit Center Assistant Director, here to present on the Recovery Permit Center Phase Two Transition Plan. Um, just to start a little background on how we uh got here today. Um, as a reminder, which you can forget, August sixteenth, twenty twenty, the CZU Lightning Complex fire burned approximately eighty-five thousand five hundred nine acres with an estimated eight hundred and five parcels affected. Six hundred and ninety-seven of those parcels developed with residences. Shortly thereafter, the board acted swiftly to approve a thirty-one month contract with Fourleaf at a cost not to exceed six million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And they uh, set up a uh Recovery Permit Center in the basement here in this building where services included same-day appointments and expedited permit review. Then uh, four years later, May, uh, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, the board approved a Phase One Transition Plan and extended the Fourleaf contract through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, an additional cost of six hundred thousand dollars to cover continued RPC services. At that time, the board also uh directed staff to return with a Phase Two Transition Plan outlining steps involved in transitioning CZU customer service and permitting from Fourleaf to county staff in anticipation of the expiration of the Fourleaf contract. Which brings us here today uh with uh staff recommending approval of that Phase Two Transition Plan. Um, before I get into the specifics of the transition plan, I just wanted to give uh everybody an update on where we're at currently as far as permitting. Um, uh, as a reminder, the permitting process um for CZU uh rebuilds is unique and then it consists of two steps. The first step is a preclearance step, which entails submittal of preliminary plans for review and approval by FIRE, Environmental Health, Zoning and Geology. Um, and upon approval of the preclearance, property owners can then uh submit the formal building permit application. So that the, the, the concept there is to re- uh, review the preliminary plans for red flags and and uh bring those um big issues to property owners' attention before they uh put together building permit level drawings. Um, to date, the RPC has received and processed four hundred and eighty-six preclearance applications. Um, they've approved three hundred and sixty-nine of those for a success rate of seventy-six percent. Um, and an additional ninety-four prec- preclearance applications are not approved or in CNC status. Um, twenty applications have been withdrawn or have gone void and three are currently in process. I wanted to note that in the years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, the RPC preclearance submittals peaked with the bulk of these four hundred and eighty-six um preclearances processed in those first couple of years after the fire. Um, since then, permanent activity has steadily decreased. Over the course of the last nine months, since staff last reported to the board, the RPC has received thirty-two preclearance applications for an average of three per month. And this slide just gives you an idea of where um property owners are uh hung up in the preclearance process. Um, and just so you're not wondering why this doesn't add up to ninety-four, um, uh, one or more agencies can have it in CNC status um to add up to that ninety-four. So as you can see, the majority of property owners um are having some uh hurdles, experiencing hurdles with um environmental health. With seventy-four, um, we've got sixty-one property owners um dealing with geology issues, ten in FIRE and sixteen was zoning. I did want to note that the majority of preclearance applications that are in the CNC status um entail reconstruction that exceeds the definition of rebuild in kind and thus must uh therefore must meet all current standards, which is a little bit of a high the majority of property owners who are rebuilding in kind. Um, so once folks get through the preclearance process, they can then submit the formal application, building permit application. And as of uh, as of October thirty-first of this year, the RPC has processed a total of two or has received and and it and or is processing two hundred and eighty-seven building uh permit applications. Of these, two hundred and sixty-four permits have been approved. Um, to date, a hundred and twenty-seven replacement homes have been finalled and are occupied. Hundred and thirty-four homes are under construction today. We have an additional fifteen applications that are currently in plan check status. I wanted to give you an update on our temporary housing permit program and staff's recommendation when it comes to this program, um, which again was developed in order to allow property owners and tenants displaced by the fire to construct temporary housing or place an RV on their parcel while they pursued permanent housing um elsewhere or possibly or place an RV on their parcel while they pursued permanent housing elsewhere or possibly on the parcel. So to date, the RPC has processed a total of 66 temporary housing permit applications. Applications of those, 18 have successfully rebuilt their home, and another 17 properties are currently under construction with permanent housing. And just like applications for preclearances and building permits, new application submittals for temporary housing, the temporary housing program have steeply declined, which does make sense. It's been four years since the fire, so you know, presumably all of the owners and tenants displaced by the FIRE at this point have secured some type of housing. In light of this, staff is recommending the county expire this program as of January 1, 2025. And I just wanted to note that expiration of the program would only affect new permit submittals. It doesn't affect in any way those currently in the program who have permits in hand. And I would like to note, and it's in the staff report as well, that should a property owner or contractor wish to reside on a parcel temporarily in conjunction with building their home, the county already has an existing process for that. They can submit a temporary housing plan in conjunction with their building permit, and we will review and approve that. And that program would apply to CZU area come January 1, just as it applies countywide, and we do receive those requests and we routinely process them. All right, I'm gonna touch on the Phase Two Transition Plan now. So again, it's May 14, meeting the board directed staff to return with a detailed plan outlining the transition of RPC services from Fourleaf to county staff. Since then, staff has evaluated every aspect of the recovery permit program. This includes evaluating staff resources, including counter-service appointment and inspection availability, cross-training of staff, updates to the RPC website and permit materials, and notifying property owners of the impending transition in the CZU burn area. With regard to staffing, the Building and Environmental Health divisions are currently fully staffed, which I'm happy to report, which definitely was not the case when I reported last to the board in May. In addition, the department is currently recruiting for a senior building inspector. That position was recently reinstated. Thank you very much for that. We're going to be using that inspector in part to ensure adequate inspections, staffing upon the transition, because we do have 137 replacement homes currently under construction. We want to ensure expedited inspections of these homes, which is a priority. With regard to counter-service and appointments, the county has ample bandwidth to pick up the additional appointments generated by CZU rebuild applicants. Similar to application submittals, appointments have steadily declined over the course of the past two years. In the past four months, we've been recording all of the RPC interactions with the public, which includes walk-ins and appointments, pre-scheduled appointments. And they've fielded 77 inquiries, so that's an average of 19 per month and five per week. With dedicated appointments available Monday through Thursday, there's more than ample appointment availability for CZU parcel property owners. Those are dedicated appointments that are in addition to our typical appointments that we offer the public. So we have plenty of appointments available, and our county building technicians are cross-training with Fourleaf staff to ensure they're up to speed on the unique permit challenges, permitting challenges that come with CZU parcels and the permit procedures. With regard to the website, we looked at that and we noticed there's a lot of outdated information on the RPC website, actually. So we'll be updating that to omit all the outdated information and update the information to, you know, indicate that the RPC has moved upstairs, which shouldn't be too difficult since they've been taking appointments on the fourth floor anyhow, and update some permit process information. So in summary, the county is well-positioned to take over the customer service, permit intake and review, and inspection procedures associated with CZU properties come January. As I mentioned earlier, the county rebuild review process entails the preclearance review by the county geologist, and we also are reviewing the zoning review in-house, so those things are not going to change. The FIRE and environmental health reviews are currently conducted by Fourleaf subcontractors. So when we transition on January 1, the FIRE review and inspections will be transferred to the appropriate county FIRE district personnel, and the environmental health review will transfer to county environmental health staff, marrying our typical building permit review process outside the CZU area. And these reviews will continue to be expedited. Building Plan Check of CZU rebuilds is currently conducted by Fourleaf under the contract, and upon transition, these plan checks will continue to be expedited. Right now, county staff actually has bandwidth. We're pretty caught up on plan checks. So either county staff will be conducting those building plan checks, or we could still send them out to Fourleaf because we have an existing consulting contract with Fourleaf, so it would be the same staff that are reviewing them now if we want to do that. So I feel that the building permit plan check is covered. And I just wanted to note that we have not seen many building permit applications coming in over the past couple of years. Again, a sort of a steady decline. Over the course of the past six months, we've received 16 applications for an average of two per month. Given this permit volume and the trajectory of winning permit submittals, management is confident county staff can continue the current practice of expediting permit reviews for the rebuilds. And I wanted to touch on the fees. As the board may recall, one of the more significant actions that you took back in 2020 was to adopt a reduced fee program for property owners who lost their home in the CZU FIRE. On average, building permit fees for CZU rebuilds amount to approximately 2/3rds the cost of the standard residential permit, which is significant. And I just wanted to note that the reduced fee structure has, in my view, been instrumental in promoting the reconstruction of residences in the CZU burn area, particularly for original property owners who are dealing with limited insurance reimbursement funds. So staff is not recommending any changes to the approved CZU fee structure for original property owners, so that would stay the same. So with that, just in summary, county staff recognizes the importance of continuing to provide a high level of customer service and expedited permit review to CZU fires survivors. And as covered in my presentation, county staff are poised to take over the RPC-related duties come January 1. The staff is recommending the board accept the updated metrics for the CZU rebuild progress and approve the Phase Two Transition Plan, which entails transitioning recovery permit services from Fourleaf to county staff on January 1, 2025. I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation. I'd like to open up to members of the public to see if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item here in chambers. If so, please approach the podium. We'll give you two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, staff. My name is Tania Schweitzer. I am a CZU FIRE survivor and also the executive director of the Long Term Recovery Group of Santa Cruz County. I wanted to start by appreciating Fourleaf, appreciating the county and your leadership in providing that opportunity and that service for the community. We rebuilt our house with these expedited permits. We were number nine to get a final occupancy, final certificate of occupancy to move back home. And I have worked with multiple families who have also been able to take advantage of this. As you can see from the numbers provided today, there's been great strides, and there is still a lot of work to do. Out of the 369 approved preclearances noted today, there are many that have not submitted plans for permits. We just received at the end of October a list of those that are in that category, also those that are in conditionally not cleared category, and people that have submitted plans but stalled out, and we are actively contacting them now to see if we can support them through this process. We have so far been able to find around 10 people that we didn't even know existed, because even though we have provided disaster case management care for this community for over four years now, there are families here that we don't know about. They don't know about our services. They are the most vulnerable. So with that, you know, and I also want to mention that there's a certain level of care that Fourleaf has provided, Fourleaf staff has provided, that is trauma-informed. And so that's one of my concerns, is that that trauma-informed care is going to go away. So my advocacy is that it continues. I have to do that for my community, and if it doesn't, that there are some guardrails in place, that there's a memo. Every two months, that we have some data to look at, at the budget hearings coming up, to make sure that the expedited permits are still happening under the 10-day guidelines. So thank you. 10 business days. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public here in person who'd like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none of there any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
We had no speakers online, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board then for questions and comments. I'll start with Supervisor McPherson.
I have some long comments. Thank you. It's an encouraging report, I think, and I think compared to other counties that have gone through similar disasters, we're doing very well, although it takes longer than you want, I think. But I would thank you, Director, Assistant DIA, CDI Director Drake, and Director Machado back there. I've appreciated many updates that we've received throughout the course of recovery here, and our staff has been responsive, I think, to the board directions, or your staff has been, during the past few years, and I agree that I think this is the right time to move all of our RPC work to in-house following a six-month extension that we just had that ended will end at the end of the year. So, and I think the incoming board would benefit if we had a continuing report, regular update, say of six months after the RP, every six months about how they're progressing with getting more of the permits out. I'd like to note, too, that when we took, when we look at the 6.8 million contract with Fourleaf, the county invested 2.3 million of its own in that, and that cannot be recovered, which does not include untold informal planning and district staff time working with constituents, and there's been plenty of that time that has been spent. I can guarantee you that. We thought we would recover more costs, but rebuilding has not reached the level that we had hoped because of the challenges that are outlined in the report that was just related, the geological hazard, septic, and fire access, but also because the market forces, such as the cost of building materials and contractors and insurance, and on and on and on. Thank you for outlining in the staff report the kinds of permit services for which we waived the reduced fee. I think people have forgotten that. I think we reduced it by 2/3rds. That was something that we did, and I'm glad we did it. We should have done it. And I'm glad to see that our preclearance activity has increased this year, considering the 200-plus parcels that had not come in for even even preclearance during the past reports. That's one thing people, when they say how many structures have been rebuilt, they haven't, many haven't applied. And I think that your outreach efforts are to be commended, too, because we've tried to reach out to these people to find out what's gone wrong or why aren't they building. Some have sold, whatever the case may be. And it's my understanding that the majority of the permitted applications that are stuck in the geological and septic preclearances are for applications that exceed the in-kind envelope of, what, a plus 10%? And so that's the ones that are hung up. We said you can build and add 10% if you want to rebuild, but some have not come in to do that. And I hope we can continue to work with these property owners, and I'm sure we will, to realize as much resolution as possible in recognizing our regulatory limits that we have, much of this on the geological, environmental issues that we have to face or state standards that we have to meet. And I also think it's important to recognize that nearly 200 of the parcels affected by the FIRE have changed hands, and that we continue to work with those new property owners as well in that process. And I do have some questions. Of the almost 200, I think with 196 FIRE-impacted parcels that have sold, should we assume that most of these contained single-family structures at the time of the FIRE? In other words, the 196 parcels that sold are best viewed as a percentage of, what, I think it's 697, 700, something like that?
It's actually the larger, the 805 parcels.
805? That had single-family homes before? Okay.
Yep.
So is that... Should we assume that most of these contained the single-family structures then? Okay.
Yes, that would be my assumption, just because of, you know, the rush out to sell these properties. I'm guessing that the majority of them were parcels that were previously developed that lost, you know, homes. I haven't done, you know, run that metric, but that's what we're seeing as far as coming through the door.
Okay. And the staff recommends closing the new temporary occupancy permits unless the requests are embedded in a building permit application. So you can't apply to move onto a FIRE property without a building permit in the process after 2024 this year?
Correct. That's the recommendation.
That's right.
Just, that's what applies countywide.
Okay.
Is, it's the temporary housing application comes in conjunction with the building permit, whereas the temporary housing program, you are allowed to submit that application before having your building permit plans, you know, prepared. So it's a little bit of a higher bar. However, it has been four years, so.
So they've had time.
Yeah, they've had time, but it's up to the board, of course, what you want to do with the program.
Okay. Those property owners who currently have temporary billing permits have three years from the issuance of the date to put a billing permit, put in a billing permit application, is that right?
That's correct.
And will there be an outreach to those permit holders ahead of the expiration date then? Are you planning to get in touch, try to get in touch with them again?
Yes. Yeah, but we will. We need to.
If we're transitioning, I just want to make sure we have the staff to serve the people that are still wanting to get into the process. So you think you have adequate staff to do that.
We do. We do need to get on that, because there are, there are some that are getting ready to expire, and we need to see if they'd like to extend, so we'll make a note of that.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think Monica Morales is here, too. I don't know if you can answer this, or it would be better for her, but getting the septic approval has been one of the biggest challenges for rebuilders who have not made it through the clearance, and with this plan, will we be able to send that septic inspection and approval work to Environmental Health? I don't know if she wants to answer it, or if you can't. I think she might want to, maybe. Because the septic seems to be the hangup, that the geologic.
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Pearson. Monica Morales for the Record Health Services Agency Director. Yeah, you know, our staff have been working together to try to get an understanding of what the data, what's really the holdup in the data. We're, we know that meeting the standards is very difficult for folks, even when you're just purchasing a property here in our county because of the new standards. We have requested the data from Fourleaf to just get a sense of what are they noting, and it's something that we're still waiting to get from Fourleaf to really decipher some of the unique barriers that folks are experiencing. I will say, you know, as this transitions back into the county, we've also spoken to CDI about the type of support that we will need. You guys have heard our story in environmental health. We really want to be in support of this, support our community, and at the same time, we have one project manager that oversees this entire program, five trainees, which means that they're not actually registered to date. And we are about to bring someone on board full-time, which we're very excited about. But we do believe that this will continue to be something that we'll have to build the transition in capacity for as we move forward. I don't know if Director.
Maybe I should. Excuse me. They said they had staff here. Do you think environmental health, you have the one project manager, and you're about ready to get another person in there? I just want to make sure we have enough people to move this along as quickly as possible. How many do you need? You have one, and you said there's about one more to come on, and there's five.
Five trainees, yes. So right now, we have one manager over this program. She typically has been supporting not just this effort, but all of the additional efforts in the county when it comes to our permit, septic permits, so it's a big job. We have five trainees, which means that they're still kind of moving through that process of actually being registered or certified as environmental health staff. So it takes some time, typically about two years, and then, you know, there's that whole story of them either staying with us or finding something different that happens a lot to us. I think we're excited to see what the new individual can bring, but we do know just the intent that we need. but we do know just the intent that we need to really turn things around. It's going to be a barrier for us. But like I said, we're working with CDI. We're looking at what's remaining in the contract. Can we use that to at least enhance temporarily some of the additional transitional activities? So we're very much in line to continue this effort and work through things a lot quickly.
With it, because you said, Justin, Ms. Drake said, it's about 16 per month now. I just, are we going to get hung up? I, I wanted to make this transition. I think it's the right time to do it. I just want to make sure we don't get hung up and stopped, you know, at that step, environmental health. Do you think we, we have the adequate staff to do it throughout, is what I?
Apparently, no. Apparently, no. I mean, you have how many millions invested into a current contract with, you know, a lot of staff through Fourleaf? We can replace that capacity that Fourleaf brought to the table. We do believe that we will work and make this a priority. Absolutely, you have our commitment to that. And like I mentioned, we will see if there's anything remaining from the current contract. I believe you have that in the memo. There's about $200,000 to see if we can build a little bit of that transition support for environmental health, because we are eager, just as you, to get through this. We don't want this to continue, carry on. And some of the more harder cases, typically when they hear that programs are ending, they come on board fairly quickly because they want to make sure that they also take advantage of their resources. So hopefully that answers your question. Feel free, Andrew.
Supervisor McPherson, if I could add, yes, I'm committed to doing whatever we need to do to keep the transition moving forward, including employing some of the Fourleaf consultants in the, during the transition. We have, as I mentioned in the staff report, we have $200,000 left over, but I'm willing to add other net county costs to make that happen. So we're going to be working with environmental health, working with CDI and Fourleaf to see if there are consultant staff that we need to keep on, we will do that, and I'll come up with the resources to do that.
Well, then that, that gives me more comfort to just move ahead with this. I'd like to make the recommendation when the time comes, but I think we should have a progress report every six months or something like that, in the process, too.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, do you have any comments on this?
Supervisor, no, supervisor friend, no. Okay. I, I have, I think some of my questions were answered, but I do share some concern with the the temporary housing program coming to an end, because I think that there's folks who are out there who are underinsured, and they're, you know, trying to get back to a place where they can rebuild. And, you know, if the trigger is that you have to have a building permit and you have to be ready to build in order to put a temporary home on your property, I don't think everybody's in that position right now. And some people are still working towards, you know, getting the resources together so that they can, you know, get to that point. But I, I think that it's a little premature for us to get rid of that program. So I'd, I'd be happy to help them to support, you know, your motion when the time comes and also see if we can, and I have a couple of amendments, but one of them would be to extend the temporary housing program. The other is that I do just want to express my appreciation for the Long-Term Recovery Group. I think that they've been doing a really great job of trying to connect with people who have been impacted by the fires and really trying to figure out a path for them to continue to move forward. And, you know, they've been really instrumental, providing a forum where those impacted by the disaster could share their experiences and relate their concern with service agencies, and coordinating with relevant government, non-government aid agencies, and responding to the needs of those impacted. They provide the structures necessary for equitable distribution of public and private donations to disaster-impacted households. And they've really been instrumental in coordinating disaster case management services to ensure that assistance reaches those impacted whose available resources may be insufficient. And, and I do just want to highlight as well that the Long-Term Recovery Group has been, was instrumental in helping folks, and continuing to helping folks who were impacted by the 2023 storms. And one of the things that has been brought up is that they have a general contractor on their staff who's helping people get through this process, but the organization really only has sufficient funds to keep the general contractor on staff for the rest of this year, and they're going to need funding for next year. And so just given, you know, what we've been hearing about, how there's a lot of people who are going to, who are, you know, still continuing to work through this process, and how we've been hearing about, you know, there may be some conflicts and complications with the reduction in environmental health staff. I also think it would be good for us to recommend that we, give me one sec, that we, as part of the direction, direct staff to incorporate an additional $150,000 into the OR3 budget proposal for 2025, 2026, to support the Long-Term Recovery Group, and that we also direct staff to work with Long-Term Recovery Group to help adjust concerns and complaints regarding rebuilds and provide quarterly reports on the rebuild permit, permitting. And I know Supervisor McPherson mentioned six months. I think quarterly would be a little bit better, because we really need to understand how this is going to impact people who are trying to go through this process. And then I guess I'll just say that, you know, this is not an easy decision for me personally to make today. But we did conduct, I want to thank CDI staff that we did at the last Rural Bond and Dune Association meeting, had staff join, staff from my office. And when asked the folks in that meeting if anybody had any opposition to us ending the Fourleaf contract, there were no comments. And, and so while I do know that there's people out there who need the Fourleaf support, I think a lot of the people out there who are able to access and move forward have done so. And so I think that by incorporating that funding to keep the Long-Term Recovery Group contractor and keep them moving along with, you know, keeping funding for environmental health, but also understanding that there may be some complications to extending the temporary housing program. I think it would be kind of a compromise to us being able to move forward with transitioning away from Fourleaf. And so those are my comments and recommendations. And Supervisor McPherson, I'll turn it back to you for the motion on this item. And I'm happy to make the friendly amendments.
Thanks, sir. Can I? Concerned about the OR3 money, I, I, I agree that the money's got to come somewhere. I, I don't know if there's, they're stretched then anyway. I don't know. I'd ask the CIO, is that, where should we, if we wanted additional funding to?
I would, I would suggest that if we want funding for next years, that we discuss it in the budget for next year. Because there's competing priorities. In this year's budget already, in this area, we funded the inspector position. That was quite, it's going to cover, be covered partly by fees, but there's also a net county cost, no doubt about it in my mind. And then we're also going to cover the environmental health as well this year. So for next year, given all the pressures that are going to happen, starting with the new federal administration in our budget, to designate money right now for next year's budget seems premature to me. If we can just incorporate that discussion into the budget talks, when you look, and we can look at everything and all the priorities that we have, that would be my recommendation.
I think my concern is that I understand that many of the departments right now are preparing their budgets for next year. And this is something that I think is really, it's a, it's a huge priority for people who are impacted by the fires. And knowing that staff are working on building their budgets, my, the recommendation I'm providing today is that they build this into their budgets. And for OR3, this will be an additional 150,000 will be built into their budget. And, you know, it's up to staff to find those sources of funding, but I think that, you know, we're making a major step here today. We're, we're taking away a service that many people found to be very beneficial in helping them rebuild. And there's a lot of folks out there who are still kind of going through this process. And so I don't want them to feel like we're leaving them behind, even though we're going to have a lot, I get, we're going to have a lot of challenges ahead, but, you know, the overall budget, overall county budget is a very small amount. And so my hope is that just by getting staff to incorporate it into the budget for consideration, and that we can act on it at a later date, you know, would give me some comfort being able to go back to the residents of Bonne Dune and the third district to tell them why we got rid of this program.
I just, I, I'm, I'd like to do, I just don't know. I don't know if I want to really budget this money. We don't know, that we don't have. I don't know where it's going to come from. If we extend the temporary housing, would it be for the three months or six months or whatever that? We probably should do it the same time, I think.
I would suggest that we extend it for a year, and then we can get a better update on kind of where folks are at in this process.
It, the temporary housing that we have there is, is degrading the environmental, is it degrading the environment there at this point?
So we were having an issue definitely with new property owners not CZU victims pulling temporary housing permits, and they're building compounds. And at the report to, back to the board, and May, I recommended that we revise the temporary housing program to ensure that we only issue temporary housing permits to original CZU survivors. So we've had that in place, which will help some. But yeah, we're not, we're not really seeing a lot of movement on people pulling permanent, you know, follow-up permits. We're seeing pool houses, swimming pools, all kinds of, you know, structures. I mean, that's not everybody, but it's, you know, I, I think we're definitely, you know, the more permits we issue this late out after the fire, the more, these are people that are not, you know, displaced by, you know, the fire, but, you know, have, are, are building permanent structures that will never come back in for permits. It's just going to be a code enforcement issue in the future. But, you know, with it being just original property owners that are eligible for the program, if you want to keep it open for a year, you know, we'll probably maybe see some trickle in and, you know, I fine with that if that's what you'd like to do, but it is evolving into something else.
And I think the extension would be for CZU fire victims, not for people who are coming in who are new owners of the property. I think that's really the intent.
Specify that for six months, if you want to do that.
I think you said a year.
For a year, for a year? Okay. And then the, as the budgeting would be considered during the next budget cycle?
Correct.
Okay, then that, that'd be okay.
Yeah, I, we can certainly bring forth the recommendation. You can't bind a future board when the budget's adopted, when the budget's adopted, right? But certainly we can bring forward the recommendation and, and then, you know, it'll be considered in the context of everything else. Because it's going to be, you know, a tumultuous year, to say the least, starting in January.
And that, then the idea is that we can have the conversation to adopt it as part of the budget when that time comes. But I think that working it into the OR3 budget makes a lot of sense right now, and I think it'll give a lot of people some, you know, hope that there's still going to be support for groups like the Long-Term Recovery Group, who are really, you know, and I will point out that I know that the executive director had asked for some information earlier this summer to help connect with folks who were, who lost their properties. She wasn't able to get that information until October. And so, you know, I think that by securing funding and showing that we're continuing to make investments in this program, which are far less than what we invest in Fourleaf, will give the people who have been impacted by these fires a little bit of solace to know that, that we're still continuing to move forward with these efforts and fund them. So Supervisor McPherson, if you're happy to make the motion?
Make the motion.
Oh, your microphone's off.
Let's see, to the, for the additional direction, a one-year temporary housing extension and a budget discussion for $150,000 in their long-term, long-term recovery.
Okay, I'll second that. And then, and then I guess the other, are the friendly amendment was to direct staff to work with the Long-Term Recovery Group to help address concerns and complaints regarding rebuilds and provide quarterly reports on, on quarterly updates instead of six months.
That, that quarterly report, how does that, it's a lot of pressure on you, or does that?
Um, we could provide metrics quarterly as a consent calendar item.
Okay.
All right. So in further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call, roll call vote on the item.
Supervisor Koenig.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, and then, of course, the extension of the temporary housing program is just for victims of the CZU fire, correct?
Correct. New ones.
Not new people.
Aye.
You. Supervisor, your friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on. So thank you very much for that presentation, and we look forward to continuing to see how this all rolls out. Okay, with that, moves us on to item number 14. This is the Year 2025 Growth Goal Report, and I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Good afternoon again. Board of Supervisors, Mark Conley, Principal Planner in CDI. With me this afternoon, to my right, is Fernanda Diaz-Pini, Policy Planner in CDI. And as stated, what we have for you today is the 2025 Growth Goal Report that we're going to present with you. And this is, really, it's two things. It's a report card on how the county has been meeting our goals and policies for growth in the unincorporated area, as well as setting forth what that next year's goal ought to be. The growth goal was presented to the Planning Commission on 9/11, September 11, and they unanimously voted staff's recommendation to support what we have for you. So with no further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Fernanda, who is going to provide a brief presentation and give you our recommendation for this year. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. The 2025, hmm, the 2025 Growth Goal Report is before you today for consideration. We are recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the attached resolution establishing a year 2025 growth goal of 0.75% for the unincorporated portion of the county. In 1978, voters approved Measure J establishing the county's growth management system to address the resource and public services impacts of population growth in Santa Cruz County. As part of the growth management system, each year, the Board of Supervisors set an annual population growth goal for the upcoming year of an amount that represents the county's fair share of statewide population growth. The Annual Growth Core Report examines various factors to determine the proposed growth rate for the year ahead. This includes an analysis of population growth trends, status of 2024 Measure J residential allocations, and of issued building permits for new residential units, potential growth, potential growth impacts, and housing needs such as progress towards meeting the county's required regional housing needs allocation, Arena for short, a review of demolition permits and city bonus projects, and the current pipeline of subsidized affordable housing projects. In 2023, the unincorporated area experienced a negative 0.6% population growth rate. Although the county's population growth has been mostly stagnant with a slightly negative growth rate, the California Department of Finance, or DOF, estimates that the rate of decrease has slowed. It's worth noting that the, for the first time in recent years, the state of California grew at a rate of 0.2% in 2023, up from a negative 0.1% the previous year. As you can see, the unincorporated area's population grew rapidly in the 1960s and 70s, surpassing, surpassing growth rates in the state and the county as a whole. Both growth rates declined in the following decades, and population actually decreased in our area between 2000 and the 2010 census years. It's also worth noting that the 2020 census data shows that overall, the county's, the unincorporated county's population is on the rise with an average annual growth of 0.2% over the last decade, a total increase of about 2,400 people since 2015. So the growth rate established by the growth goal determines the maximum number of building permits that can be issued for new market-rate residential units each year. The maximum number is then converted into allocations, which are granted to new permit applications. Section 3 of the Growth Core Report summarizes the status of 2024 residential building permit allocations. As of July 1st this year, 25 allocations have been granted, and staff anticipate a total of about 50 allocations will be granted by the end of the year, similar to last year's allocations. The demand for allocations remain low compared to previous decades, and staff anticipate that there will be more than enough permits available for the remainder of the year. As you can see on the graph shown, there have been more than sufficient allocations available to meet the demand to construct new market-rate housing units in the past 20 years. In dark blue is the number of allocations set by the board. And the light blue is the number of allocations carried over from previous years. And the orange line showed the lump, showed, the orange line shows the number of allocations granted. And the orange line show the lump, show, the orange line shows the number of allocations granted. Although allocations granted remain low this year, there are a number of major residential projects currently, currently in the permitting pipeline. As previously mentioned during our rezoning item. Projects currently in development are reflected on Table 10 of the report, which also shows that 81 housing units were issued building permits as of July 1st of this year, including one affordable housing unit and 63 accessory dwelling units. So to support affordable housing goals, affordable housing units and accessory dwelling units are exempted from the need to obtain permit allocations under the county, the county's growth management regulations. Additionally, in accordance with the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, Senate Bill 330, Santa Cruz County will continue not to enforce the Measure J growth goal limit on residential allocations within the affected county areas while the statute is in place. Those are shown in blue on this map. In Santa Cruz County, affected areas include the following census designated places. So Live Oak, Paso Tambo, Paradise, Paradise Park, and Sopel. All other aspects of Measure J unrelated to limiting building permit, building permits or populations, such as the county's affordable housing requirements, are not impacted by this bill. Additionally, staff will still track Measure J allocations and subsequent building permit issuance in those affected areas for reporting purposes only. Staff did not anticipate that the 2025 growth goal will result in the need to limit building permits in these or other areas. So the RENA or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation represents projected housing needs for the unincorporated county established by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. The current six-cycle RENA plan was adopted by Ambag in November of 2022, and it allocates a goal of 4,634 new housing units to the unincorporated area of the county. Recent changes in state law led to a considerably higher RENA, resulting in a RENA number approximately, approximately 3.5 times higher than the previous cycle for Santa Cruz County, for the unincorporated area. This table shows the six-cycle RENA share for the unincorporated county, which identified a need for 2,166 moderate and above moderate income units. Very low and low income units are exempted from Measure J allocations. As such, the recommended 2025 growth rate was formulated based on DOF population estimates and the total number of moderate and above moderate income housing units needed pursuant to RENA. In light of the six-cycle RENA and DOF population estimates, therefore, staff recommends a 0.75% growth goal for 2025. We anticipate an increased demand to build new market rate units in the near future due to an increasing number of projects already in the county's permit pipeline. Recent adoption of the sustainability update and the 2023 housing element, which set forth increased housing densities, as y'all heard earlier today, and continued state legislation aimed at increasing housing supply. The proposed growth rate will result in 373 available allocations for market rate residential building permits in 2025. Allocations will be distributed between urban and rural areas of the county at a 75 to 25 ratio to recognize the greater potential for infill development in urban areas. Pursuant to Chapter 17.4 of the County Code, the 2025 Growth Goal Report also recommends, as in previous years, that unused market rate allocations from 2024 be carried over. This would result in a projected total of 579 market rate residential building permit allocations available for 2025. Staff have found that establishment of the 2025 growth goal is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, and a notice of exemption has been prepared and included in your packet. Staff therefore recommends that the Board of Supervisors today conduct a public hearing on the proposed year 2025 growth goal, adopt the attached resolution establishing a year 2025 growth rate, sorry, year 2025 growth goal of 0.75 for the unincorporated portion of Santa Cruz County, and authorize the filing of the SEQA notice of exemption with the clerk of the board. This concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Does any member of the public would like to speak to us on this item here in chambers? Seeing none, I'd like to go online and see if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item.
We have no speakers online, Chair.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments and action. And I'll start with Supervisor Hernandez.
Oh, no questions, but I'm ready to support this as well.
Any questions, comments? Second. Okay. So a motion by Supervisor Conick, second by Supervisor Hernandez. Thanks for all your work on this. And yeah, well, I guess we'll see you guys again next year, right? Yeah, exactly. So I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote on the item.
Supervisor Conick.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
McPherson. Hernandez.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And I believe we may get out of here pretty early. So we'll move on to our last item, item number 15. This approval to waive requirements for retired and new attend, and so I'll invite staff from HSD to come and give the presentation on this item.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, members of the board. I'm Kimberly Peterson. Oh, sorry. Kimberly Peterson, Deputy Director with the County Human Services Department. I'm joined by Trish Daniels, the Director of our Administrative Services Division. According to CalPERS regulations, employees who retire from CalPERS, the CalPERS system must wait 180 days or six months before returning to employment. An exception to the wait period is allowed if the public governing body, U, provides a resolution certifying the critical need to bring the employee back to support work prior to the 180-day period. The law requires that the resolution be approved in a public meeting rather than the consent. We are requesting the resolution for an exception because HSD fiscal is currently undergoing a leadership transition. The Chief of Fiscal is scheduled to retire in a month. One administrative services manager accepted a promotion to another department. And another administrative services manager has retired. While we have recently filled one of the ASM positions to ensure continuity and support during this critical time, we are requesting that the retired administrative services manager, Joyce Albright, be permitted to return on a temporary basis. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item, there's no members of the public here present. So move to online and see if there's any members of the public online who wants to speak to us on this item.
We have no speakers online.
All right. We'll bring it back to the board.
Recommended action.
Second.
All right. So a motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Friend. It just makes sense to have that continuity. And so I'm more than happy to support staff's recommendation. So thank you all for bringing this to our attention. And really it's just to meet the state requirements to hire this individual. So with that, I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Conick.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously and we are getting out of here at 3:01. So thank you all for your hard work and we will see everyone again here next Tuesday for our last meeting of 2025.